Good morning. It's 10 o'clock and on May 17th, or April 17th. So at this time, I call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for April 17, 2025. I would ask you all to please rise, take off your hats if you have them, and stand in for the Pledge of Allegiance led this morning by our county manager, Jennifer Davidson.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I hope it's obvious to everybody, not only here but online, that I am not Sharla Hales, Commissioner Sharla Hales. Commissioner Sharla Hales is joining us remotely today, and so she's asked me to run the meeting this morning, today, and I've enlisted the support of Commissioner Rice to run our timing system for our public comments. The public comment restrictions are listed in our agenda. Before we get into that, I have a couple of housekeeping items. Number one is that what we will be doing is very similar to the last meeting where we had an item that was, we anticipated would take some time, and we moved that to the very end of items. And so, item 10.6 today will not be held until, that will not be heard until 1:00 when we return from lunch, so that we can devote all the time necessary for that item. If you have a public comment that you wish to deliver on that item since it's for public action, possible action, I would ask that unless you hold your public comment until 1:00 when we hear that item, or if you can't be back after 1:00, then you're welcome to use your three minutes during this opening public comment section. Okay? So I hope that's okay with everybody. With that, a public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker unless additional time is granted by the board chairperson, which today is myself. The Board of Commissioners uses timing lights to ensure that everyone has an opportunity to speak. You will see a green light when you begin, and then a yellow light which indicates that you have 30 seconds. You'll also hear a beep at that time, hopefully. And then you should conclude your comments. Once the light turns red, we ask you to please finish your comments and sit down. In addition to opening public comment, public comment will also be taken on administrative agenda items that are identified for possible action and closing public comment. If you plan to speak on a specific item that is on the administrative agenda and identified for possible action, then please provide your public comment at that time when that agenda item is heard. Public comment will not be taken on liquor board items, of which we have none today. If you would like to provide public comment, okay, so we have no liquor board items. Public comment must be limited to matters that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. We don't have any control over our sheriff's department or our court systems, so we would ask you once again to keep your comments to our jurisdiction. Public comment must be addressed to the chairperson and not the members of the public, so that the board may take further action on the issues that are raised by the public if appropriate. At this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the Board of County Commissioners. Do I have any public comment? We also ask you, when you approach the podium, to please sign your name and state your name for the record, so that our clerk can get your name into the record correctly. Thank you.
Robert Poehmann for the record. I am formally requesting that near future, you put an agenda item for us on Hayborn Road and on Muller Parkway, what the status is of the whole thing. There's all kinds of loose ends. We get little pieces here and there. The local record courier does a good job of trying to keep people up to what's going on, but there's an awful lot of loose ends, and it isn't just your problem with Mr. Parks. There's stuff at the beginning of the road Mr. Pegram's responsible for, and he's in a quandary exactly what is the final set elevation of the parkway to see what impact there is on Montero. And of course, Hayborn Road there can be a problem until it gets built. There's no drainage, complete drainage on Hayborn Road that would drain some of the water that's involved with the parkway. When you look at the south end of, we've been told that the gentleman who has the development at Virginia Ranch has died. I assume that there's an obligation there, whether they build the development or not, they're obligated to build the road, but all that stuff needs to be...
Okay, sorry, sorry.
On, for instance, the county bought the culvert pipe that goes under the road behind the hospital, but who's responsible for actually installing it? And maybe some people didn't know that when they were building the extension to the hospital, it flooded in the spring because it overflowed, and that's one reason these culverts are being put in. So you can see that there's an awful lot of loose ends here, and I think the public needs to know what it's all about, and it's obvious you're not going to have the road built by the end of the year. And every day that it extends, it costs us, the taxpayers, more money.
Thank you, Mr. Poehmann. Point well taken.
I have a question before you start my timer. Commissioner Gardner, are items 11.1 and 11.2 also going to be heard after lunch?
As I indicated, we're going to try to move through the agenda as well as we possibly can, and if we have time before noon, then we'll go ahead and take those items. Otherwise, we will wait until afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'll just make a brief comment then before. Ellie Waller, "I was very surprised to hear that the VHR Advisory Board may be dissolved. I listened to the meeting. I attended most all the meetings and felt participating at the level was a viable means for the Tahoe Township people to feel equally important as the Valley people. The current VHR Board members are very familiar with the Tahoe Township bringing more levity to the discussions than you would probably get from what I call our understaffed community development team if you have, Board members have questions. The Planning Commission is related to zoning, not enforcement. Furthermore, the airport, China Springs, water conveyance, senior services have Advisory Board. What makes this one less important? Tighten up the requirements for those that apply, stating attendance is crucial. Do not apply unless you can commit to a monthly meeting. TRPA is partially to blame for this inconsistencies in policies. They have not weighed in with a framework for any VHRs and how to enforce, analyze impacts. Measure T in California didn't have to happen. A lawsuit here didn't have to happen if TRPA had policies and ordinances in place that analyzed the impacts, capped the numbers, provided parking standards, et cetera. This segues into what I often state, I still believe Douglas County needs a dedicated staff person. Many departments would benefit from a qualified Tahoe expert. Douglas County could possibly take back permitting of large projects, which bring in revenue. Staff in the Valley wouldn't have to determine Valley or Tahoe priority. You get my point? No disrespect to the Community Development Department, but in the case of the South Shore Area Plan process, which is an arduous task being undertaken, has not run as smoothly as it should." Which brings me to a budget question. Now that an environmental impact statement has been determined to be necessary for the Barton Healthcare Project, will there be discussions about new budget requests that will have to come forward? Is there a scope of work similar to the environmental assessment going to be released by Douglas County alongside TRPA? May 14th is the first meeting at the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency Advisory Planning Commission. It would be really good for all you Board members to attend that APC meeting to understand how an EIS process unfolds. I'd like to see Douglas County webpage, cite the specific date and not just reference the TRPA site. And lastly, SB 420 Tourism Bid District, I spoke before the legislators several times on this. This is not an assessment, it is a tax, and I hope that we're going to start following it before it's too late.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Jason Gibson. We're in Douglas County where we're having a moment in recollecting how misguided our policies and our organizational principle can be. It's Crime Victims Awareness Week in Douglas County. We're not going to have us a Passover weekend or an Earth Day. It's going to be Crime Victims Awareness Week this week, and that's what we're doing here. That's sponsored by Bill Hellman and your JLEC stakeholders there. And last week, it was National Autism Month, Douglas County spearheading the social neuroses of the country. Neurotic Autism Awareness Month, sponsored by domestic violence advocate Melissa Elges and her husband Ron Elges. Two of the richest people in Douglas County, making six to 10 times more than the average family makes in an entire year. Next week, it's COVID-19 Memorial Days. We're really cooking, I tell you. We're really cooking here. Just for the hell of it, let's go ahead and bring Matthew 17 into the fold. You will know them by their fruits. These are the fruits of Douglas County governance today. The state of Nevada ranks fifth in the nation for violent crime. Douglas County's the richest county in the state. They got an F grade here by the Public Institute for Integrity in Government. Nothing's changed, even though this is 2015. Nevada ranked 48th. Ethics Enforcement Agency Failure. Public Access to Information Failure. Legislative Accountability D and Judicial Accountability F. It goes on. This will be on the record for you. Nothing's changed. Not a thing. Happy holidays.
Additional public comment?
Good morning. This working? Yeah. I'm Chuck Mollwinkle. We moved here in 1988, built a house at the east in Johnson Lane there. There was no East Valley Road, there was no real Fremont there either. Our well, I'm addressing the water now, the well was 110 feet. About three years ago, the well went dry. It's now 315 feet at a cost of $7,000. And Danny's attention there. Thank you. If we keep building and we have this rock quarry out there going, what happens when we run out of water, folks? I'm up on a little hill there. We are, so it's not really a big deal, because the water's going to be gone down on the flat, too. 200 and some odd new houses by the Justice Center. Maybe not be the smartest one in the barrel, but something ought to be done, maybe, I don't know what, but something. The other question I have is, East Valley was not built for big trucks, including Starbucks and all the rest of that, the painted rock, all that stuff. The other day, I'm going down East Valley, and whatever this machine was took up more than one lane. Busting down the side of the road, long time before it went off, I'm probably going out there to the last thing is the safety. I witnessed three times now, two small boys on motorcycles. I'm very familiar with motorcycles. They were Honda 50s and one Honda 80. Drive right out onto Johnson Lane, right in front of the car. If those kids rode out in front of that gravel truck, they're dead. Little boys dead. Now, that's not the county's problem, it's the parents' problem. I understand that. I'm just talking about the safety of all of these big trucks. Not just the painted rock truck, but the trucks that are coming, missing downtown San Jose, going down, going down Johnson Lane and then out East Valley Way, back the other way. So maybe there's some signs that could be put up that the trucks can't go that way, or I don't know what. Anyway, I thank you for your attention and hope that something happens. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
I'm the event director of the Carson Valley Balloon Festival's Hot Air for Hope event coming up May 16th through 18th. We have 34 balloons coming. I want to thank the Board of Commissioners and the community for supporting Hot Air for Hope. Our intentions of bringing a small balloon festival to the community has exceeded our expectations. As we enter our third year, we are proud of the positive impact that Hot Air for Hope has made on our schools and our community. We do school outreach programs that we've already started this year. We started out with a homeschool program, and tomorrow we are at Gardnaville Elementary School. In addition to the school outreach, we're also proud of the economic impact that we have made that was unforeseen. We didn't think we were going to make an economic impact, but our rooms are filling up in the community and our businesses are busy. We bring 34 balloon pilots plus their crew to our community, and they're proud to be here. We thank you guys for allowing them to come. We look forward to continuing to bring this family-friendly event to our community for years to come, and we hope that it really becomes a staple in our community. Come out and visit us on that weekend and see the balloons. One of the unique things about our event is that you can see it from all over the community, not just from Lampy Park, and we hope it brings a smile to your guys' faces like it does ours. But again, thank you for supporting us, and we appreciate it.
Ms. Johnson, thank you for bringing this event to our community. It's a great event, and my wife is a 36-year breast cancer survivor, so we really pay attention to this particular event, so we appreciate what you're doing. So thank you.
Thank you.
Additional public comment? Seeing no additional public comment, we will go into approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion. We'll close public comment, and I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed agenda as presented.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Tolbert to approve the agenda, proposed agenda as presented. All those in favors, any questions? None? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the previous minutes, the draft minutes of March 6, 2025, regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no additions or corrections to the minutes, I move that we approve them as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Tolbert to approve the March 6 draft minutes, regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Any changes? Seeing no changes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. We'll now go into the consent calendar. Before we get into the consent calendar, I have a couple of corrections that I need to read into the record. Item H, I've been informed, item H, the Agenda Reflects Resolution Number 2025-033, and should actually be listed as 2025-R033. The backup material resolution document was corrected and supplemental. Item L, the Agenda Reflects Resolution Number 2025-R-0032, we don't use four numbers there, we only use three. So that needs a clerical correction also to note that it should be 2025-R-032. The document was corrected and supplemental. And item S, the Agenda Reflects the Correct Resolution Number 2025-R-041, but the backup material title was listed as 2024-R-041, so that was corrected and supplemental. So with those changes for corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented, unless Commissioners have items that they wish to pull.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar as presented.
That's corrected, right? Yeah.
I'll second.
Okay. I was waiting for a second. Don't everybody push their butts at once. I think we have a maximum of three microphones on at a time, so with that, a motion by, did you make that motion?
No.
Commissioner Tarkanian, seconded by Commissioner Tolbert to approve the consent calendar, items 6A through T as presented with the corrections. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes five to zero. We'll now move into the administrative agenda and go to item number seven. We got a little bit of different, okay, a little different agenda today, so bear with me, please. Item number eight, Emergency Management for Possible Action. Discussion to Adopt Ordinance 2025-1653, Amending Title III, Chapter 3.50 of the Douglas County Code by Increasing the Monthly Surcharge for the Enhancement or Improvement of the Telephone System Used for Reporting Emergencies from 75 cents per access or mobile line and 7.50 per trunk line to $1 per access or mobile line and $10 for trunk line, reducing the limit on the uncommitted balance in the 911 Surcharge Special Revenue Fund from $1 million to $500,000, and providing for all other properly related matters. This is the second reading. It seems like this has been before us for three months, but anyways, this is finally, I think, the second reading that is final. So being presented by our Deputy District Attorney, Zach Wadley.
Zach? Thank you, Mr. Chair, Zach Wadley, Deputy District Attorney. This has been before the Board for a little bit of time here, and the reason for that is after it was introduced a few months ago, the Board did have to go through a business impact statement process for this particular ordinance, given the fact that it's raising the fees as reflected in the ordinance title. So the Board or staff did go through that process. The Board heard the business impact statement last meeting. There was no response from the business community or telecommunications providers related to this proposed fee increase. The Board found that there was no reason to believe that there would be a substantial business impact as a result of this fee increase. I would note that provided the ordinance is adopted, it is expected to raise an additional approximately $170,000 in the next fiscal year. That money is required to be used for 911-related services and equipment and nothing else. So with that, I think the ordinance is relatively straightforward and self-explanatory. I'm happy to take any questions from the Board.
Thank you. Better to get it right than to have to keep coming back, right? So, yeah, which, okay. So questions from the Board members? Commissioner Hales, any questions in this regard?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. That doesn't look like the, never mind. Okay, no questions, then this is an action item, so we'll take it to the public comment.
Jason Gibson with Tall Guy Audits, the now administrative think tank here in Douglas County. Says here, this is an agenda item to increase the monthly surcharge for the enhancement or improvement of the telephone system used for reporting emergencies. So on November 21st last year was the keen awareness of Chairman Gardner, who put on the record that Douglas County was receiving upwards of 70 911 calls a day. And that's about 500 911 calls a week for a retirement community of 53,000 people. Now, when we placed our NRS 239 request to find out how many of those 911 calls were legitimate, we were firewalled and ignored, as usual. So we're saying that before this agenda item is passed and the increase of expenditures and taxes or what have, and the things that we're going to have to do to fund this agenda item first be investigated by means of an NRS 239 to find out how many of these 911 calls are legitimate. And I'm willing to bet maybe 10 to 20% at the most. I'm also willing to bet that those statistics are being used to fund this agenda item. Says here, Surcharge Special Revenue Fund from $1 million to $500,000. Sounds like, I'm not sure about the numbers on that, but I am sure about one thing. I was falsely arrested by means of a 911 call that was placed through this telephone system at a peaceful political rally for assault and battery. And I'd be willing to bet that a lot of those 911 calls, you know, the calls that they're using to dispatch law enforcement to chase dogs and cats and people who stub their toe, I'd be willing to bet that those stats are being used to fund these projects and these agenda items right here. So I was also falsely accused in this chamber by domestic violence advocate Melissa Elges, who more than likely placed a 911 call to law enforcement, who had me falsely arrested outside of these chambers. And what they should have done first is gotten a warrant for the arrest to validate whether there was actual probable cause. They don't do that here in Douglas County. They don't follow the law in Douglas County. So we're willing to bet that this agenda item is overinflated, and you're going to pay for it, Douglas County.
Is there any additional public comment on this item? Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to the Board. What I would note in that exchange is that while not all 911 calls may feel legitimate at the time, I pray to God that it works the minute I need it. And so if we're erring on the side of caution and making sure that everything is covered, then that's what I believe we need to do. I would hate to have anybody in this community fail to be able to get into the 911 system when they need it. So anyways, with that, is there any other comments from the Board? Mr. Rice?
Mr. Chairman, several weeks ago, I had occasion to use the 911 system. My wife and I were returning from a trip, almost made it to our driveway, and a nice young chap in a forerunner came over the top of, right at tramway, a little bit too fast and killed our car. And thanks to my wife's driving, almost, anyway, 911 answered within the second ring, and I was so thankful that they were there to dispatch aid to us because our car, our car was, in police talk, was S5. It weren't going anywhere. And I really want to thank the 911 dispatchers for the excellent job that they did in getting us assistance. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other comments? I would note that this is a special, a special revenue fund, so the funds cannot be spent outside that fund, cannot go into the general fund, cannot be spent on any other items but this. So I just want to make sure that's on the record. Any other comments? Commissioner Hales?
No, thank you.
Okay. I'll, since you know other comments, I'll entertain a motion on item number eight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2025-1653, amending Title III, Chapter 3.50 of the Douglas County Code by increasing the monthly surcharge for the enhancement and improvement or improvement of the telephone system used for reporting emergencies.
Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian to adopt ordinance 2025-1653, amending Title III, Chapter 3.5 of the Douglas County Code as presented. Since you know other discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. We'll now go into item number nine for possible action, discussion to adopt resolution 2025-R-027, establishing certain miscellaneous administrative fees, fines, and charges for services provided by Douglas County Public Works Utilities. This is being presented by Mr. Phil Richter, Public Works Director, and I don't see your cohort with you today, so just you, huh? You figured you could do it by yourself. Okay. You got it.
Phil Richter, Director of Public Works, for the record. Yeah, Mr. Rob Malard is on vacation this week, so he, he left me high and dry. The resolution before you, just some background information, information, it was noticed in the local newspapers and has met the statutory 30-day noticing period in compliance with NRS 318199. This resolution will consolidate two existing resolutions, and those are Resolution 2015-R-030 and 2017-R-019 into a single document. The fees, fines, and charges that are currently in Resolution 2015 are the ones being updated. The Resolution 2017, which is the water rights fees, there's no changes being made to those. They're simply being incorporated into this single resolution for clarity and transparency for future transactions with water, water and sewer utility customers. So principally, we're updating the administrative fees for cost of, just cost of service increases. Most notably, we are altering the water meter installation charges. That charge is separate from the connection charge and was, is intended to cover the cost of the meter itself, the initial meter and installation of that. In, as you know, with the current economic times and things like that, the, the resolution before you actually will, is moving those meter costs to cost incurred plus, plus an installation charge of $100. That's really, I think the goal here is to keep pace with the ever-changing cost in the, in the materials and hard and equipment that come in for that purpose. Terms of the other, any other significant things that are being changed in this resolution, the wastewater pretreatment, there is a requirement with NDEP and the Bureau of Water Pollution Control to inspect and monitor those pretreatment applications and permits. So we are simply putting in an annual fee for the Class 1, it did not exist before, an annual fee for that, for renewal as a mechanism for compliance with that Bureau of Water Pollution Control requirement. And then we are increasing the water meter tampering, nonpermitted use of water hydrants, and second or third offense for wasting water fines in this resolution, again, just as a means of, of making it meaningful from an enforcement standpoint. And with that, I will open it up for questions.
Thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Hales, I'll go to you first. Any questions?
No questions.
Okay.
As a, as a member of the public, I did have a water breakage, and I was called, and they let, let me know right away that I, for some reason, I had a, a boost. And I just noticed here that it says that this fee of $500 for water leakage, leakage would be after it was mailed. So is that like a fallback to the mail, as because, you know, that I was notified immediately, we were able to fix it right away, and that kept me from incurring a lot of gallons of use. So just wanted to clarify that.
Phil Richter, Director of Public Works, I think you're looking in Section 7 of the resolution, that's water leak on a private service lateral. That is for, that's, that is the fine that will be imposed if a water leak is not taken care of, or if someone doesn't take any action to resolve a water leak after that noticing period. This is, this is, I mean, when, when this kind of wa, that kind of fee, that, or that fine, I rarely, if ever, well, in my tenure, we've never had to actually impose it, but it is, it's really, would be if you get noticed, like you were, like you were noticed based on the meter reading, came in, we knew, we noticed that the water usage was high, notified you, you resolved that issue. If we had to come back with a second or third notification to you to say, you still have a leak, you still haven't done anything about it, you know, we're talking now several months, by that, by that third noticing is when this type of penalty would start incurring that you now have five days to fix, or you're incurring, incurring an additional fine of $500 per day. So it's, it's really the last resort in terms of this. It's not the, it's not an initial fee.
Commissioner Tarkanian? Commissioner Rice? So I'll just indicate, you know, we've asked all of our departments to be taking a look at our administrative fees, fines, charges for services on an annual basis so that we don't get behind the eight ball on that and, and have to come to our public for excessive increases or, or large increases. So I appreciate you, you going through the effort of doing this and, and bringing this forward at this time. So with that, it's a possible action item, so we'll go to public comment. Or is there any public comment on item number nine? Seeing no public comment on number nine, we'll bring it back to the board. If there's no other comments, I'll entertain a motion. Commissioner Hales, you wanted to make a motion?
I'll move approval as presented.
Okay. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hales, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian to adopt Resolution 2025-R-027, establishing certain miscellaneous administrative fees, fines, and charges for services provided by Douglas County Public Works Utilities. Any comments, questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion passes five to zero. Thank you. We'll go into item number 10.1 for possible action, discussion on an appeal filed by, once again, Mr. Richter, thank you very much for, for doing that. Discussion on an appeal filed by Kiran, I, I'm going to try to get this right, Kiran Talam, contesting the revocation of his VHR permit for 377 Mary Ann Drive, State Line, Nevada, being presented by our VHR program manager, Ernie Straylo, and our deputy district attorney, A.J. Hames. If you'll hold on for just a moment until they can make their presentation, then we'll give you plenty of time. I take it you're Mr., Mr. Talam?
No, Ryan Holland, here to represent Mr. Talam.
Okay. We're not, so we're not into the comments yet. We need the presentation, and then we'll entertain your, your comments at the podium, okay? Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. Commissioners, Ernie Straylo, Program Manager for Vacation Home Rentals. This is the earliest I've ever done one of these. This is impressive. I'd like to acknowledge in the audience Assistant Chief Cranch from the Tahoe Douglas Fire District. He's in the back, I believe, if I saw him. He was there when I was here before, maybe disappeared. Okay. So he's, if there's, if there's any questions?
I think he took off as soon as he saw you speak, so.
So the items I'll be referencing on this is page 575 to 711 in the packet. The property that we're talking about is at 377 Mary Ann Drive in State Line, Nevada. It's in Kingsbury Village, so from a visual, from here, if you're going over Kingsbury, it's on the right. You take, you go on north Mary Ann, and you go up into the north area of Kingsbury there. So it's, it's up in that area. It's about a third acre in size, which is somewhat similar to the, the properties in that particular area. The property is owned by Karan Talam since September 2020. It's a currently a permitted Tier 2 VHR, and that's since 2021. It's approved for five bedrooms, four parking spots, a maximum overnight occupancy of nine. The lots surrounding the property range from a quarter to a half an acre. So to begin, on or about May 30th, 2024, and this is referenced in page 593, Douglas County was notified by Tahoe Douglas Fire Inspector that there was no power at the property, that the property had suffered significant water damage, and that fire alarm systems were not working. And there were other things that were noted on the fire report. And on the same date, on page 602, Douglas County sent a notice of suspension to Karan Talam, suspending the VHR permit pending a passing inspection by Tahoe Douglas Fire. And this is normal practice. So if there is anything that goes on with the properties. On or about August 29th, 2024, on page 610, a reinspection occurred that Tahoe Douglas Fire again failed this inspection, and that was also noted on the fail on 615. Subsequently, on or about December 30th, 2024, and this is noted in page 621, where the fire inspected, inspection report dated December 26, Douglas County was notified by Tahoe Douglas Fire that the property had passed the inspection. Tahoe Douglas County then released a permit, which is standard processing procedure. So around the 30th, the 31st of 2024, code enforcement was doing its normal reviews of ads on host compliance, and we discovered ads for the property that violated the county's VHR ordinance. Specifically, there were ads for 16-plus guests and 14-plus guests, even though its permitted occupancy is for nine. And this was noted on page 630 and page 634 in the packet. Douglas County Code requires all advertisements to list the permitted occupancy for the VHR. These ads were dated December 23rd and 25th, and as I quote, "All advertising for the vacation home rental must include the maximum daytime and nighttime occupancy as per VHR Code, and advertisements for the vacation home rental must not misrepresent the occupancy of the VHR." It's also in the same code. Additionally, the ads were missing other requirements, and so we sent a notice of violation and then assessed the fine for this violation on, and that's noted on page 638. On or about January 2nd of this year, code enforcement again was reviewing ads on host compliance, and we found another, we found another ad for the property with 16-plus guests listed in, listed in there. So the ad had the same pictures and descriptions as the other previous ads, and that the, there was, there was, the ad had been presented about three weeks prior, and there's a screenshot of that on page 651. So it was about three weeks prior, meaning the visit had occurred the beginning or middle of October, December 2024, from the date of the screenshot listed on page 651. During the time, which is when the VHR permit was still suspended, further investigation revealed that the ad was created in October, and that's on page 670, that shows the existing ad and removal impressions. So you'll see they, we, we have software that checks when it's ad, it's removed, it's at, and a lot of times this happens on weekends. On Friday night, we go home, the ad gets increased and so forth. They think we don't see it. Further, I'm sorry, it was removed in November 2024. The ad was, began posted in December 2024, all during the suspension period. The conversation, the conversion of this property is on the record on page 693. Conversation of this is on 693, which is the, the VHR board minutes. On reference to the rental, Mr. Talam states he could not cancel the reservation because the renters were from the East Coast. Given the repeated violations for advertising above the permitted occupancy, together with the new discovery that the property was advertised and possibly rented during the suspension period, Douglas County revoked the VHR permit, and notice of revocation was sent on the 2nd of January 2025. The item was appealed in February, and the minutes of the appeal is in the packet. On these issues, Mr. Talam, the issues that he had are in the minutes, and it starts on page 684. On page 687, in the minutes of the VHR hearing, Mr. Talam said he brought the ads down from 14 to 16 to nine on the 2nd, when he was asked by a board member. When he brought the ad numbers down. Later, on page 692 of the packet, Mr. Talam is asked, "Did you accept a 12 reservation?" Mr. Talam said yes. Further question, he said that if the property did have water damage, or did not have water damage, would they have stayed in the residence? And Mr. Talam said yes. He talked of clarification needed, although it's printed on the front of the permit, and the clarification he was talking about was the, the occupancy that he's supposed to have. We print it right on the front of the permit. And the rules he abides by are signed, and they take a VHR test, so they should understand this stuff. Referring back to the renter VHR comment, there's a comment that is in the packet, there's a house, and there's a comparison of the houses, and I'll get into the comment a little bit. The house in Eldorado County that he'll talk about is on page 667 in the package. And the house is, it has a driveway that you, you park on a wood driveway, and you walk right into the front door, the back of the house, has like 60-foot pylons, so you can see, have a nice view. And that's in Eldorado County. The house in the Douglas County side, you have to walk up about 45 steps to get up to the front of the house. So it, it's a key differentiator in the, in the comment section. And page 584 in the staff report shows the Kingsbury House that I'm talking about. You'll see the front of it. If you look really closely, you'll see the slant where you have to walk up the stairs. On 651, page 651, it indicates a number of stairs leading to the front door versus the California property. Karan Talam filed, filed an appeal. Mr. Talam has asserted that he did not, in fact, rent the property during the suspension period. Rather, he directed all interested guests to another property that he owns in Eldorado County, which is the two properties that I, I told you about to compare. Douglas County has confirmed, or however, the advertisements in question show pictures that correspond with the property in Douglas County that are in the ad. Accordingly, even if the rentals did occur in Eldorado County, it does appear that Mr. Talam was advertising the property in Douglas County at a time when his VHR permit was revoked. Again, per the Douglas County VHR Code, a property owner may not advertise a VHR permit when it's suspended. And we have it listed in, in the code as any person who advertises, markets, or operates a vacation home rental located anywhere in Douglas County without a current valid and correct and active VHR permit is in violation of the county code. And during a suspension period, no rentals may occur. On February 26, 2025, an appeal hearing was conducted by the VHR Board. The advisory board voted three to two to uphold the revocation. Mr. Karan timely filed an appeal of the advisory board's decision. Sorry that was long, but I wanted to make sure you had all the information. Anything else?
Mr. Hames, do you have anything to add? You always give, Mr., Mr. Straylo, you always give a very, very concise message, so.
Lots of practice.
Do we have, do we have any comments or questions by, by this board? Commissioner Hales, do you have any questions of Mr. Straylo or Mr. Hames?
No, thank you for asking. I appreciate it. It was concise, but also comprehensive. So thank you.
The other commissioners? So I do have a couple of questions. So this was permitted for a Tier 2, okay, which allows up to 10 per occupancy, is that right? Okay. Anything above that requires, it's not a special use permit, but it is a, a different permitting process through the VHR Board, is that correct?
Ernie Straylo for the record. So property managers and, and are required for occupancy 10, similar to a Tier 3. Sometimes people use nine to 10, similar to a tier three. Sometimes people use nine to circumvent the property manager requirement. Tier threes require, we call it a special use permit, but it doesn't mean the same thing as the building departments.
But there is a process that one has to follow, right? Including the fact that, as I understand it, in order to apply for a tier three, you have to have been a tier two owner and been without complaint for
One year.
One year. Okay. So very good. Thank you. So anyways, okay. So this is for, since there's no other comments, we need to go to public comment. Well, I don't, is Mr. Talam here? Okay. So the first thing we have to do is determine, as I understand it, Karim Talam's standing. Is that right? And then how do we determine whether or not another individual is allowed to speak on his behalf? This is a question for our chief deputy district attorney.
Thank you. Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. There is an initial step where you determine whether the appellant has standing. However, in this case, it is the applicant. Typically, the board will allow an applicant to have a representative speak on their behalf, including non-attorney representatives. Generally, the, the board will allow the appellant to state their case in whatever way they wish.
Just want to make sure we have all that
Yeah.
On the record. In addition to that, the board itself, if there's somebody, either the applicant or the appellant, or another individual speaking on behalf of that, that still allows questions by the board also, right? So back and forth exchange.
Doug Ritchie again with the District Attorney's Office. That's correct. The appellant, it's not public comment. So there can be an exchange, questioning, answers. However, the board feels they need to get the information to process the appeal.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make sure that we're doing everything by the process. So do we need to determine whether or not Mr. Talam has standing first before we go into?
Doug Ritchie again. Yes. I mean, you could do a quick vote. Generally, the appellant has standing when they're, it's their permit that they're possibly going to lose.
Okay. Let's do it this way. Is there any questions by any of the commissioners whether or not this individual has standing? I don't, I don't see any, I don't see any questions about whether or not he has standing. So we'll determine that he has standing then, based on that. And then we'll entertain the individual to come forward and speak on Mr. Talam's behalf, right? So now you may come to the podium to speak. I'm sorry, there is procedure here that we have to follow because of open meeting law. Okay. So thank you.
Understandable. So my name is Ryan Holland. I operate a property management business mostly out of South Lake Tahoe. Karan asked me to come and represent him because he couldn't be here today. And so he, so I have not previously worked with him, and I'm not aware of, he briefed me on, on what the background was, and it was helpful to, to hear the summary here as well. But I have not previously represented him, managed any of his Airbnb or vacation rental listings. So I'm coming in, you know, in the ninth inning here. But here is a note that he wrote to the board. My name is Karan Talam, and I am the owner of the property located at 377 Marianne Drive in State Line. I'm writing to respectfully request that my vacation home rental permit be retained. I purchased this property with the hope of generating supplemental income for my family, particularly to support the educational expenses of my two children who are currently attending college. As a parent with three dependents, this income is essential for meeting our financial responsibilities. My V H R permit allows a maximum of 18 guests during the daytime and nine guests overnight. When my permit was renewed on December 30th, 2024, I didn't realize that my listing still mentioned a 12 guest capacity. As soon as I was contacted by the county on January 1st, 2025 regarding this discrepancy, I immediately corrected the listing to reflect the nine person overnight limit. This wasn't on
I gotta ask you something, and you're not gonna have the answer, which is unfortunate because you got to respond to it. But according to staff, he took down, he was notified that it was too many. He took it down, then he put it back up before January.
So, so my understanding is what happened is that he had bookings that he was transferring over to another property that he owns in Eldorado County. And he reached out to them saying the permit had been revoked, and we, we can no longer host you here. However, we can transfer you to this other property, one that has a permit in, in Eldorado County. And so apparently some guests had misgivings about that, or were a bit confused because they, they weren't sure exactly who he was. And, and so he wanted to open the listing back up to show that, okay, here is the listing. I am the same host as what you saw, what you originally booked, so that he could transfer them over. I believe he goes into it here. Okay. No worries. Let's see. To further ensure compliance and maintain a peaceful environment for neighbors, I have hired a property manager, Ryan Holland, who is available to promptly respond to calls from guests, neighbors, or the V H R department. He will also be installing a noise monitoring device and an exterior security camera on the property to monitor guest behavior and noise levels in real time. These measures will ensure that all activity at the home remains within the allowed limits and respects community standards. I sincerely apologize that this issue occurred, and, and I respectfully request that you do not cancel my V H R permit. I'm fully committed to being a responsible and cooperative property owner and to upholding all the county and V H R regulations. So he didn't directly comment on it in, in that note that he wanted me to read. However, that's what he did mention to me is that he, there were essentially two issues that he was having is one, it seemed like he got confused with the permit, because it said that he could have 18 people during the day and nine overnight. And so he didn't want to host a full 18 people, but he thought that that was the limit, and that was a mistake. So he, he had it listed above the nine. And, and so that was essentially his mistake on the occupancy. And the other one was relating to turning on and off the listings. He said that he, it was relating to the cancellations, and the guests were concerned that he didn't own the property, or they were thrown off because the listing wasn't active. They couldn't see it anymore. So he said he turned it back on to prove to those guests that if you look at the host on this listing, the one that you originally booked, and the host on this other one that I'm trying to transfer you over to, that still has the active permit, you can see it's the same one. So that, that's my understanding of the situation.
Did you have any further comments?
Yeah. The last thing I would say is that going forward, if I were to help him out with managing this, I would be sure to maintain compliance, coordinate with the V H R department, make sure that we're not running into these issues. So, you know, he is not here very often, and quite frankly, I don't think he was fully aware or paid enough attention to all of the regulations and, and everything he needed to do to be in compliance. And so if his permit were maintained, I would ensure that doesn't happen again.
So I guess, okay. I, so I want to entertain questions by the board if you don't have anything else.
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay. And then we'll go to public comment. So Commissioner Rice, did you have questions?
Actually, a couple of things. First question is for Mr. Straylo. If the revocation is upheld, how long will that be for?
Typically, it's, the clock starts for 12 months upon the final appeal.
Secondly, it's just a comment. He may not have been aware of the rules, but the neighbors are. Trust me, I know.
Yeah.
I'm the one that gets the phone calls. And when we have a bad actor, and I'm not saying he's a bad actor, I'm saying that it appears that he might be a bad actor. I get phone calls, and I get emails. And ever since Major T was upheld as unconstitutional, boy, have I been getting emails. So it's going to be hard for me to open my heart to forgiveness when it is apparent this was a flagrant, flagrant violation and willful as far as I'm concerned. Thank you.
Commissioner Hales, did you have any comments or questions of either the applicant or the appellant? I'm sorry, the appellant or?
Thank you. Thank you for asking. I do not have questions. I have comments, but I'll save them for after public comment.
Thank you. Commissioner. So I, I have a couple of questions. Number one, are you currently his property manager? Are you under contract at this point in time?
No.
No, you're not. Okay. And how long has Mr. Talam had his V H R permit? I guess that's a question for Mr. Straylo.
Ernie Straylo for the record, since 2021.
2021, so four years, right? Okay. And, okay. And so the, certainly our vacation home rental people permittees should certainly know the rules by now. Okay. And so, does he have other properties within Douglas County? This is the single one.
Ernie Straylo for the record, the single permit holders are all that's allowed now.
Okay. So I don't know that, and I think you've been before us before representing another client.
I have not.
Okay. You look familiar. That's all. Okay. And I just don't understand why, if he has, if, if Mr. Talam has properties in Eldorado County, why he didn't just advertise in Eldorado County instead of advertising for a, for a, a, a property that he has a permit that's under suspension. So that baffles me of why he didn't just do that. And so the, the other concern I have is you're saying now that he's now considering putting in noise monitors and hiring a property manager. Is that, did I hear you right on that?
Yes.
Okay. So this particular individual I have history with because I got a call from a neighbor about a year and a half, two years ago. That was a neighbor that's suffering from cancer and complaining about the loud noises that were taking place from this property. And I asked them to call code enforcement. But in the process at that time, I took it upon myself, probably inappropriate, but I took it upon myself to get the phone number of the, the individual that was supposed to be the contact, emergency contact for noise complaints, and contacted that individual, tried to call them late at night when this, when the occurrence was taking place, the noise was taking place. And I did not get an answer from an individual. The, I left a message, and then the following day, I got a, a, a phone call from the individual, and it happened to be the housekeeper who was now cleaning up the house. And I said, are you, do you know that you're the listed emergency contact? And the individual said, of course not. You know, didn't know that I was. Not, not appropriate. Okay. So then I, she was able to provide me with Mr. Talam's phone number, and I called him during the middle of the day. I believe he lives somewhere in the Bay Area. And, and at that time, when I talked to him about the noise complaints, he said that he was immediately going to put in noise monitors. And now that's, that's a year and a half ago, two years ago. And, and so now he's also considering at this time, putting in noise monitors. You know, I don't think it takes that long to acquire noise monitors, if I'm not mistaken. I've never had the occasion to buy ones myself. So anyways, those are the things that trouble me is, is he could have very easily advertised. He knows the rules, and, and he's been running for a number of years. So, and he knows that we should not be renting when he has a suspended permit. So anyways, if we were to, my concerns are, of course, that if we were to approve the appeal, we would be actually in violation of our own code. Would that be accurate, Mr. Haynes?
Jay Haynes from the Douglas County DA's office. Yeah, the code, the code states that after two violations, the permit must be revoked. And so if you believe, based on the evidence presented today, that there were at least two violations related to the advertising and the use of the, the advertisements during the suspension period, then code would mandate that you deny the appeal.
Mr. Rice has additional comments?
I, I've noted that there is a representative from Tahoe Douglas here who's spent the morning with us. And out of curiosity, I would like to know what damage there was that caused you to recommend pulling his permit?
Bryce Cranch for the record. Good morning. Bryce Cranch, Fire Marshal, Tahoe Douglas Fire, for the record. The question was, what damage to the property? Is that correct, sir? So we were alerted to water damage from a leaking hot tub or a leaking spa tub in the premise that had created damage to some of the drywall, which would be fire protective construction. And that would be the areas of our concern.
You came all the way down here to say that?
Okay. Did you have, before we go into public comment, do you have additional information?
Yeah, just a follow up on the two items that you had mentioned. Number one was, you were wondering why he wasn't advertising the properties in Eldorado County. So my understanding is that when the permit was suspended, he already had a bunch of bookings that were in the future. He tried to cancel as many as he could. And one guest was saying, hey, we can't cancel. We need a place to stay. That's why he essentially told them, hey, I have this other property in Eldorado. But that one was being advertised separately. It just happened that that one was, was vacant at the time when he wanted to transfer one. So that was just one comment there. And then the other one was relating to the complaint and having a year and a half, or however long it was, without putting in the noise detector and having the local contact not responsive. So I, I mean, I can't excuse not putting that in when clearly he had intended to do it earlier. He actually told me that he already purchased one, but clearly he should have done it quite a bit sooner, installed it sooner. If the permit were to remain in place, my standard protocol would be to give the neighbors both my contact information and another local contact that, that we work with, who, who helps with our management business. So I'd give that to all the neighbors, along with immediately installing a noise detector and security cameras to make sure that there wouldn't be any noise complaints and, and that we would be doing right by, by the neighbors and, and the community. So, you know, that, that's not to excuse any issues that came up in the past, but I would hope that if it were retained, I feel confident that those wouldn't come up in the future. So.
I understand. And I, I think he's put you in a very difficult position today of having to come before us. But anyways.
Doing my best.
Okay. With that, we'll go to, go to public comment. Okay. Is there any public comment on item 10 dash one or 10.1? So you know, public comment, we will come back to the board. Commissioner Hales, you had comments that you wished to make, you said?
Yeah, just briefly, and you know, taking it in, in the, the worst light regarding this appellant, he flagrantly violated the rules. Taking it in the best light, he negligently violated the rules. Even if that's the scenario where he negligently violated the rules, I believe this appeal Even if that's the scenario where he negligently violated the rules, I believe this appeal deserves to be denied because he should have been more careful. And, uh, and, and we can't have our permit holders being that careless with our, with our rules. So I, I will vote in, uh, in favor of denying the appeal.
Commissioner Talbert?
Uh, yeah, I'd kind of like to echo that. Again, it's kind of like the one that was brought up to us, uh, with the cell towers is that we're reviewing the previous decision and can we find if they brought evidence that the previous decision was flawed and we all, everybody has admitted that it's not. So to me, I don't see any reason why we would, um, uphold the deny, the appeal.
No, I, so look, he has a one year, he's going to lose his permit and to me, that's not even enough when you violate the rules, if, particularly if it's intentional. And I agree, if you're negligent, you get in a, a privileged license, you're making money off of it. He says he needs it to pay for all of his family expenses. Well, then find out what the rules are and, and, and be a, be appropriate on it. One year, uh, without a, the VHR permit, I don't think is, is too harsh.
I have no other comments, Commissioner Rice? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
So I, yes, I'm just chairman for the day.
Well, you are, you are today.
Very good.
No, uh, insult to Commissioner Hales.
None, none taken.
Mr. Acting, I move that, uh, we uphold the suspension of the property at, uh, three seven seven Marianne Drive in State Mind, Nevada.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, a mo- a motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Talbert. Uh, and I believe that would be, uh, item number one from the decision of the county and the VHR Advisory Board upholding the revocation of the VHR permit on this property.
No, I, Mr. Gardner straightened it out, thank you.
Oh, okay. Okay. I just want to make sure it's all in the, you know, right? So, um, okay, then seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the, uh, motion to affirm the decision of the county and the VHR Advisory Board upholding the revocation of the VHR permit as presented. All those in favor, signify by a say an aye.
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 Okay, motion passes five to zero. And you, hopefully we can, uh, inform Mr. Crum that he's welcome to reapply after one year. Thank you.
Can I jump in?
Please.
To reapply, and we appreciate that now he's serious about getting a property manager and we would want him to have one if he were to reapply, uh, because clearly he's better off with one.
Assuming that the property manager wants to bite this off.
Yes.
It was a little sarcasm, not directed at you.
Thank you very much for your attendance and time today. We appreciate it. Okay. Wow, we're getting you out of here before lunch here, uh, Mr. Straylo. It's, that's impressive.
Oh, no, he's got more.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, we'll talk to you later. Um, item number ten-two, ten-point-two, per presentation only, this is once again, per presentation only, so we will not be taking public comment on this. Introduction of Ordinance twenty twenty-five dash, uh, sixteen fifty-four, a zoning map amendment rezoning a point eight-five acre portion of an eight-point-six-four acre parcel from PR, which is private recreation, to SFR eight thousand, single-family residential, eight thousand square foot minimum net parcel size. The parcel is located along the east side of Golf Club Drive, east of the intersection of Gray Mill Court and Summit Camp Way in the Indian Hills-Jax Valley Community Plan and Clear Creek Tahoe Specific Plan. The property owner is Clear Creek Residential LLC, APN number one-four-one-nine dash oh-three dash oh-oh-two dash one-seven-oh. The board may also discuss and associated tentative subdivision map amendment, master plan amendment, and specific plan amendment. This is the first reading and is being presented by, uh, one of our planners, uh, Ms. Lucille Rayo. How's that?
Got it. For the record, Lucille Rayo, Community Development. Um, since, since this is introduction only, we do not have a full presentation for you. Uh, just a few quick notes, um, this was, uh, recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on April eighth. Um, we will be back to you in May seventeenth with a full presentation and the applicant, applicant's representative. Um, so with that, um, I will conclude.
Are there any questions currently for Ms. Rayo by the commissioners? I don't see any hands up in the air. Okay, so, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. And we'll go to item ten-point-three. We, we, we're good without a break for right now? Okay? Okay, uh, cause we're going to take a break in about forty-five minutes. Um, if you need one before then, okay, maybe we'll get through a couple more items and then we'll take a, a quick break, okay? So, uh, ten-point-three for possible action discussion to approve the Community Development Department's request to reclassify the vacation home rental program manager position to a program manager position, pay grade two-oh-four to pay grade two-oh-five, being presented by our Community Development Director, uh, Tom Delaire, and our Deputy Community Development Director, Ms. Andrea Pauling.
We're trying to share with Commissioner Hales.
All right, technical difficulties. Good morning, everyone. This is Andrea Pauling with Community Development. I have Tom Delaire, uh, Director with Community Development. Uh, just to give you a heads up, uh, I'm here for two reclassifications today. I did combine them all into one presentation. I know they have to be two separate motions.
Okay, so why don't you hold off then, if you're going to do that? Let's go ahead and read that item into the, uh, into the record and then we can do both of them at the same time, okay?
Thank you, that's why I brought it up.
Okay. So item ten-point-three and ten-point-four will be presented together, uh, by the same folks. Um, and item ten-point-four, uh, discussion to approve the Community Development Department's request to reclassify the Economic Vitality Manager Position from pay grade two-oh-three to pay grade two-oh-four and move the Economic Vitality Manager Position from the County Manager's Office to the Community Development Department. There we go, and then we will take a quick five-minute break after that.
Awesome. Thank you, Commissioner Gardner. All right, Andrea Pauling's back. Um, so we have two suggested action items that just was read into record. Um, those are items number ten-three and ten-four. We're going to be discussing, uh, reclassification of two positions today. One of them is the, um, Vacation Home Rental Program Manager Position will be just, uh, transitioning into a Program Manager Position, pay grade two-oh-four to two-oh-five. And the second one is the Economic Vitality Manager Position. There will be two parts to this one, um, reclassifying from a two-oh-three to a two-oh-four pay grade and also moving it to the Community Development Department from the County Managers. Just prepared a brief presentation for you guys today, um, just a little bit about the why and the background. Uh, this proposal is addressing some needed restructure within our Community Development Team for efficiency, project overview, and workload purposes. Um, why we think these are, these reclassifications are necessary is it provides a, a needed value within our team. Uh, right now, we have a lot of rather large projects going on, um, as you guys are well aware with our street strategic plan, our master plan coming up, and the whole overhaul of Title twenty code updates. Uh, we have been diving into these, making a lot of good progress, but we felt like a little bit more program management and program management overview would be best to get these moving along and hopefully completed within the next year to year and a half. Um, and that is going to encompass, um, the VHR Program Manager Position being a Program Manager Position. It gives them a little bit higher level, um, overview of these programs. The next piece of it is the Economic Vitality piece. Uh, moving that position to Community Development will help with the customer service, uh, aspect. They'll be over our counter technician, our public counters. Um, so they will be managing them, uh, and helping with the property and business owners, working hand in hand and having some more direct oversight, um, helping with the communication and being part of our, our actual department will, will help, I, I believe, with more efficiency. Um, we work with several entities right now. It's helpful to have a more well-rounded team that's assigned to specific tasks and projects within our, within our department. So what about the cost? That's always a big question. Uh, as of right now, there will be no change in the number of full-time employees, uh, resulting from this. We will add one position to Community Development, but it's also a full, but it's already a full-time classification. Um, we, this reclassification for both of these, I won't read these into record, um, as you can see them right there, but for both of them, the current hourly rate falls within the proposed new salary range. So currently, there will be no immediate increase. However, Human Resources, um, has been helping all along the way with this reclassification. You guys will see in your packet that there are two memorandums and breakdowns of these reclassifications for each position. They will be conducting a full pay equity analysis after this is either, um, hopefully approved today and moving forward. And that could warrant a, a potential increase at that time. Just want to make sure that that's clear. But it is, uh, currently in our approved budget and it is in our existing budget. So this is the current organizational chart. Uh, it feels like Douglas County Community Development continues to grow. Um, so this is our current and I've highlighted where the new, uh, positions or reclassification of the positions will be. Uh, instead of the VHR Program Manager Position will be a Program Manager Position and then Economic Vitality Manager will be right here in Administration. And that'll give us a total of thirty-seven and a half staff. We have two shared staff with Public Works and thirty-six FTEs within Community Development. To sum it all up, everything I just said, um, it enhances, uh, oversight of all program management specific to our Community Development Projects. As you guys know, we have a lot going on. Uh, we believe this will very, this will help us quite a bit with getting these projects moved across the finish line. Um, and Economic Vitality and Customer Service, this is huge, uh, just to keep an oversight. And these are the recommended motions, but I'm going to open it up because I think, uh, Mr. Tom Delaire has some, uh, comments he would like to share.
Thank you, Andrea. Tom Delaire for the record. We've been working with Nikki since she started, uh, in that position as Economic Vitality Manager and, and, uh, she has gotten her name out in the, in the public face or fronting the public view and has been able to, uh, make some critical contacts. And, and we have been talking with, with potential, um, companies coming into Douglas County over the past several months, um, and, and been dealing with, with, you know, with those proposals, uh, through her office. And I think, I think this is going to be critical to have her integrated within our permitting department. Also, she's working on, uh, a business, um, a, a business package so that it'll be easier for, for people to get their permits that they need out of Community Development and, and she'll, she'll be in the front lines of that, uh, that effort in this new position. So I just wanted to, to throw that in there. And then also, um, on Ernie's side, uh, with the, the Vacation Home Rental Program Manager and having that full title Vacation Home Rental, it really limits our ability and his job description to use him in other places. And now that we feel that, uh, in our department, the VHRs are being managed very well and I think, I'm hoping the emails aren't as bad as they were five years ago, Commissioner Rice, but, uh, but they, um, but I think, I think with the enforcement and the help with the assistance with the, um, the two officers that we do have and also our Sheriff's Office, um, enforcing these rules, I think it's, I think it's really calmed down substantially. And, and Ernie's got some time on his hands to, to help, uh, our department in other, in other ways and, and this will provide that opportunity. So, thank you.
Thank you. I, I did want to take the opportunity, is that it? Okay, okay. I did want to take the opportunity to recognize, uh, we have, uh, had a lady step into chambers today and I wanted to recognize her, uh, Ms. Christine Vito, our new, uh, Director of HR, right? Hanyoung Resources. So, did I get that title correctly? Okay. And, and the name correctly also, right? Okay, very good. We don't see you much, but, uh, it's a pleasure to have you here today. So thank you for your help in this regard. And then also, uh, one of the, we just saw, uh, Ernie Straylo, our Program Manager, uh, potential Program Manager, previous, uh, or, uh, I won't go into it. We had him here earlier, we met, and then also we have, uh, also Nikki Rudelbach, who is our Economic Vitality Manager here today, and so we're discussing that. And I, I want to indicate that, um, I, I concur with what you have said, uh, Mr. Delaire in regards to, um, I serve, uh, on the Chamber of Commerce, uh, and we have a subcommittee there, Economic Vitality and Community Development Subcommittee. And, uh, your involvement, Andrea's involvement, and certainly, uh, Nikki Rudelbach's involvement on that has been very much appreciated and, and it becomes a pair of ears to, to find out what the business community is looking for, uh, out of our, out of that department. So I think this is, uh, potentially a, a good change. Okay? So anyways, uh, did any of the other commissioners, we're going to take only one section, session of public comment on this, um, but, uh, before we go to public comment, we have commissioners that wish to, uh, go ahead, Mr. Rice.
Okay, my question is, well, let me preface the question. As you know, uh, the VHR program is very near and dear to my heart and also very near and dear to my, uh, computer who receives all the emails that I get. Mr. Straylo has done a magnificent job of easing the load on my computer. Although now that, uh, South Lake Tahoe is in a state of flux, uh, thanks to the, uh, the court decision outlawing Major T as unconstitutional, uh, I am now getting more emails from here wanting to know why, uh, we don't ban all, all of them like South Lake Tahoe did, which ain't going to happen, pardon my English. And secondly, why do we have them at the lake and not in the valley? And I'm, I'm going to have to be addressing that one. Number one, there's never been VHRs in the valley and there has always been VHRs at the lake because of the environment. I don't want to do anything that will take away from the ability to enforce, enforce the rules on our VHRs. Mr. Straylo has done a magnificent job and I want to make sure that giving him this added responsibility is not going to take away from the VHR program or the people that have been on the committee regulating our VHRs.
Uh, Tom Delaire for the record, yes. I, I, I echo those sentiments as well. I don't want him to, I want him that that's his main focus, that and code enforcement. Code enforcement is, is a, a big job as well. We only have two code officers for the entire valley, uh, or the county, and that, and that is a, a struggle that we're finding. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of complaints on, on neighbors here, but, uh, but those are the two programs that are, are still, he's going to be running and operating. These are specific projects. Uh, it won't take the time, um, away from him focusing on the VHRs, the time that he needs on those, those issues, for sure. And then our, our code officers are, are doing their job. And I think Michael, being up in, our code officer, Michael is up in Tahoe, I think that helps, uh, with the enforcement, tremendous help actually in the enforcement and also being able to get into these homes, um, with the fire department and partnering with them. And, and I think, I think that's where the program has really made a big change, uh, in the directions that it has and, and we still have a few folks.
And we still have a few folks that, that try and bend the rules or break the rules and, and we catch them and we find them and they appeal and you guys are hearing those and so is the VHR board. So that's not going to stop.
Yes, yeah, we're not talking about VHRs today, okay? It's not on the agenda. We're talking about two positions today. Commissioner Hales, did you have anything you wanted, wish to add at this time before we go to public comment?
No, I'll comment after.
Okay. So as I indicated, we'll do one session of public comment on this. We'll go to public comment at this time. Once again, you're limited to three minutes. Commissioner Rice will be, will be handling the timer. Any, is there any public comment on item 10.3 or 10.4? Okay, going, going, gone. Okay, back to the board, okay? And so if there's additional comments by the commissioners before we go to a motion, this is the time.
Yes, I do have comments.
Please, please proceed. I'm sorry.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I am concerned about our ability to serve customers well in the community development department. I've had communications from constituents about cumbersome delays and I really appreciate the thoughtfulness in how to use existing resources to address that problem. And I, I would like to further improvements in, in that. So I'm fully in support of that. I appreciate Ms. Rudelbach's willingness to help in that regard. And I also feel like it is a good move for the program manager position for that change as well. And I, I think these are good changes. Thanks.
Since he no other discussion, we entertain a motion. The motions are up there. We can do this all at once, right? By adding the word "and"? Okay? Correct? So, does anybody wish to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the community development department's request to reclassify the vacation home rental program manager position to a program manager position, pay grade 205, and to approve the community development department's request to reclassify the economic vitality manager position from a pay grade 203 to a pay grade 204 and move the economic vitality manager position from the county manager's office to the community development department.
Second. Okay. Motion by Commissioner Turkanian. This is like three or four times now today. That's, you're on a roll. Okay, just, just making that notice, you know? We don't get your name into the record very much. Okay, motion by Commissioner Turkanian, seconded by Commissioner Talbert to approve the recommended motions as presented. Is that sufficient?
Sure.
Okay. Since he no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion passes five to zero. We'll take a, a five-minute break. We'll come back in five minutes at 11:40 and then we'll get what we can in before noon and then we'll, we'll exit for lunch. We can get on. We're going to try to accomplish item 10.5 and then also 11.1 and then take a break for lunch. Ms. County Manager?
Yes.
Are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay. No, that's okay. Okay. So item 10.5 now is for possible action, a discussion to approve a 51,750 professional services contract with Kimberley and Horn and Associates to prepare an application to FEMA to document a reduction in the design flow rate of the 1% storm on the Pine Nut Creek and to authorize the county manager to sign and execute the contract and any associated applications and to pay any associated application fees. This is being brought forward by Jeremy Hutchings, our, our county engineer, assisted by, I guess, it looks like Mr. Delaire is still there. So, okay, very good. You're, you're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's Jeremy Hutchings, county engineer. This should be item 10.5 on page 995, professional service contract for the Pine Nut Creek flow reduction. So where's the project? It's the Pine Nut Creek. It's kind of over in the, why is this not, here we go. Here's a blue of the watershed. The 1% storm, it's, that's more of a, it's a chance, right? Most people call it the hundred-year storm. It's really a 1% storm. It's 1% chance of happening in any given year, but people call it the hundred-year storm. So the watershed generates, it's about 56 square miles. It's in blue. The red highlights kind of the project area that you can, project areas of our detention basins we're thinking about in the stormwater master plan, just to give you a frame of So the flow rate out of the pine nut, published and adopted flow rates right here of 5,150 CFS. I know that's, and it produces a volume of about 6,000 acre feet. I'm going to try to zoom in on this to give you a frame of reference because I know sometimes, even for engineers, it's hard to figure out, you know, what is, what is 6,000 acre feet? What is that like? See if I can zoom in for, especially for Mrs. Hales. So before the, for this presentation, I just did a quick Google Earth boundary. You can see here it's about 6,000 acres. So you can see where, you know, where are we? We're in, we're over here in Minden. It's all of basically Minden, Gardinerville, plus Buckeye Farms, plus Virginia Ranch, plus all these other areas all the way out. And that would be a foot of water over that entire area. So it's a lot, 5,150 cubic feet per second. So I looked at the stream gauge for the Carson. This morning was about 532 CFS. So if you're driving by the river and you look, that's about 10% of that flow. I think that's all I wanted on that slide. Go to the next one. So what are we trying to do? We're trying to do an engineering study to reduce the flows. Call it engineering magic, I guess. We had some initial studies done with the stormwater master plan and one of the engineers that was working in the watershed said, hey, you know, these flows seem a little high. You might be able to justify a lower flow. So I said, well, about how much? And he said, well, maybe 18%. Doesn't sound like a lot, but here's the existing flow at 5,100. It could take it down to 4,300 CFS. So, you know, big deal, right? What's so great about that? Well, a couple of things. I'm going to go to my notes, which is a little hard because it doesn't, I don't want it necessarily show up on the screen. But if you, if you dig a pond, for example, and you have 5,000 CFS coming into the pond, it's a lot more effective if that flow rate is only 4,000 CFS. So there's a plus. You potentially can shrink the boundary of the floodplain. So residents that are out on the fringe, they might actually come out potentially. We don't know because we haven't done the study yet, but 18% reduction in flow is good. You might see a reduction in depth. Again, less flow, less depth, makes sense, right? When you have to deal with the, the flow for a road improvement project, say, it makes it cheaper because you don't have to convey as much water. So those are some of the benefits and that's kind of why we should, I recommend we consider this contract. So this slide I've shown numerous times in presentations, it's just in shot of the projects. We've kind of got earmarked and we have been starting to work on them. And here's, I've kind of updated this portion of the slide because we, we don't really see a lot of chances to do flow reductions. I don't know if it's, the pine nut's a unique watershed necessarily, but it's certainly where it seems justified that we could, we could do this study and get the reduction by basically identifying the problem, preparing the studies, acquiring properties ongoing, starting the design. These designs are underway for several of these projects. Now I've worked in a flow reduction and then eventually construct and maintain. And of course, when you get to the construct part, that's when things get expensive. So budget-wise, you know, where's the money coming from, right? We're going to take it from project 20RO06, Moller Parkway. $75,000 is the, the max. Here's how I've kind of broken it down. Our contract today with Kimley Horn at $51,750. There's going to be some application fees, even though where the government, I've estimated about $10,000 for the KLOMAR process to document and have them accept the reduced flows. And then some contingency. So that should be under $75,000. But their actual contract is $51,000. But hopefully this item is transparent and that there'll be application fees and maybe some extras, hopefully not with a consultant. And the answer, some questions always come up is, can we do this in-house? No, we don't have the technical capability to do this in-house or the software is a specialty deal for somebody that's a hydrologist or has some special software and skills for that. So the answer to that's no.
Ask your quick question.
Absolutely.
Why so much for the contingency? So 21, 22%?
Yeah, that's a good question. I kind of backed into that, Mr. Turkanian. I started with the contract, or I started to see how much money we had and working with finance, they identified about $75,000. So I'd set that aside.
So is that $75,000 that's left over after all of our Moller Parkway costs are done?
Could you repeat that?
I'm sorry. Is that the 70, is $75,000 left in the account after our cost to build Moller Parkway is done?
Okay, so we're s-
If you're taking $75,000 out, are we going to have to put it back in later, I guess, is my question?
Yeah, so right now my balance sheet at Moller Parkway, just in real rough numbers, is around 25 million. I think I'm in the black or the positive side for about half a million dollars. So that's in the mix. That's part of that consideration. Right? So hopefully we won't spend the contingency and hopefully the application fees will be less. I don't think the consultant's going to discount me their fee, but.
Mr. Vice Chairman, if I may jump in here, Jennifer Davidson, county manager. The added benefit of these contingency dollars, this will allow us, correct me if I'm wrong, Jeremy, to work closely with Kimley Horn as they get into this project to, to extend and/or make nuanced changes based on the data that they're seeing as they're conducting further analysis of the floodplain that Jeremy is mentioning here. So we will only spend these contingency dollars if in fact it does further benefit the county and we can put them to good, good use. We're not going to, it would be a conversation to expand the scope that benefits us, right?
That's correct and that is pretty typical. As Jennifer said, you know how engineers be, tell you a week and, I hope Chad's not here, but I'm just a, no joking, no joking.
As, as I understand it though, on this 51,000 that you're asking, is, is that where-
we're hoping to get that back from FEMA?
No.
In the grant process?
No, we're not. That's, that's just our cost to pay the consultant to do the study and help file the FEMA application. That'll be money out the door and never, well, I think it'll return in other ways, but not back from some grant.
And Mr. Chairman, if I can expand on that, or Mr. Vice Chairman, excuse me. Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. So, we anticipate that the expenses, the money that we're fronting here is money well-invested because it will result in lower infrastructure costs. When we look at planning to mitigate flood impacts within this wash, the reduction in flood flows as a result of this analysis will likely result in decreased infrastructure expenses for us. So, the example that Jeremy used is if I have to design a pond for 5,100 CFS versus a pond for 4,100, let's just round, it's a smaller pond, costs less money, less money to move, or less dirt to move. So, likely, we will see savings in terms of future infrastructure investments that will exceed the $75,000 investment we're making here.
That was a great analysis. Thank you. So.
We'll, we'll keep plugging away. Oh, sorry, Tom Delair's with me today.
Sorry, Tom Delair for the record. Also, I just want to add, Jen, thanks for that. This, the flow reduction is, is the design. It's based on the design. It's what FEMA acknowledges coming out of the Pine Nut Mountains. And this, this flow that we have coming out of the Pine Nut Wash is substantially higher than the flow that's pretty comparable in size to Buckeye Wash. And the flows out of the Buckeye Wash are substantially lower than, well, the 18% or the, actually around, around, I think it was around 16 to 18% of flows that were reduced or, or smaller flows coming out of the Buckeye. And, and they're similar size in area. And so, that's, so that's, we want to make sure that we're consistent with, with the modeling as well. And, and it's what FEMA will have on the record. And that's, that's what's critical.
You, I'm not familiar with some of your terminology, the Buckeye Wash and so forth. This strategic, this, this study will not take care of or be a part of what we're voting on later on the easement, correct? That's, this is a different part.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. Do you have, okay. Yeah. So, strategic plan, I kind of highlighted managed stormwater here, but it does check some boxes for strategic planning, mostly managed stormwater. But it does ripple out across all these, all these other areas as well. So, two, two items on the recommended motion. One is just to confirm allocation of $75,000 from project 20R06. And then a second motion to approve the contract for the $51,750, allowing Ms. Davidson to sign that contract. And then also change orders up to 10% of that contract amount as necessary. I'm happy to answer questions or we can geek out some more on why the Pine Nut produces more flow than the Buckeye, which is super interesting.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I guess not.
So, leave that slide up, please. Yeah. Questions, commissioners? Commissioner Hales?
No questions. I think it's a great idea to do this.
Thank you. Other commissioners? No? Okay. I think we've started questions. This is for possible action. So, I will go to public comment. Is there any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, Chair for the day. Commissioners, Commissioner Hale. My name is Matt Bernard. I, I work for Park Ranch right now, so I guess I'll disclose that right out of the chute, although I would tell you, I asked David if I could come today. He didn't ask me. So, these are my observations, but I work at Park, so they'll, they'll lean that way, I suspect. First, I just want to say that, look, I, I believe, and I think we believe, this is the best tool in the toolbox to deal with alluvial fan flooding, which is upstream storage and addressing the water before it gets down and spreads out in the valley. So, fully in support of this project and Jeremy and everybody who's worked on it. I think it's the right thing to do. It can't solve everything, but it's the right thing to do. So, a couple of things is the observation from the Park Ranch and from myself is that we've spent a lot of time and energy on the Pine Nut Wash, right? Jeremy just showed some slides with potential construction dams we might build. We've studied things. We've hired consultants. We've converted open space to possible ponds. We're spending a good amount of energy and for, like staff said, the outcome hopefully is lower insurance rates, but also infrastructure costs would be greatly lowered, right? So, my observation and concern is there's a wash directly north of the Pine Nut Wash, the Buckeye Wash. I don't feel there's been a meaningful activity from the county on that wash. I know that there was a little bit of studying done and maybe even a presentation brought to you about converting another open space. And I think politically, it was too difficult, my observation, for the board to get on, on with that, right? So, I'm here. I'm genuinely concerned. We spent a lot of energy in one wash. We're going to talk about how much flows come out of there. We're going to spend maybe tens of, twenties of millions of dollars. We're building dams. We're, we're doing all kinds of activity. We're just a couple of miles north. Mueller Parkway, as discussed, has these two alluvial fans that go, that it goes through. One of these alluvial fans, we are busting our pick trying to figure out what's going on. The other alluvial fan, we're not doing anything meaningful. So, that's my observation. I, I love these people and I like what we're doing, but my observation is we're only dealing with half of it right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tarkanian. Any, any further public comment? Okay. Then we'll bring it back to the board. If there's no further comments, we'll entertain a motion. You want to put those back up, Mr. Hutchins? There you go. So, entertain a motion? Okay. Commissioner Tolbert, Hales, Rice.
Mr. Temporary Chairman, I move, number one, that we approve allocation of up to $75,000 from project 20R06 Mueller Parkway for a professional services contract and application fees for the Pine Nut Creek flow reduction project. And, number two, approve a professional services contract with Kimley Horn and Associates in the amount of $51,750 for preparing an application to FEMA for reducing the design flow rate of the 1% storm on the Pine Nut Creek. And that we authorize the county manager to sign the professional services contract amendments up to 10% of the contract amount in any necessary applications.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Rice, seconded by Commissioner Tarkanian to approve the recommended motions as presented. Catch it, okay? Okay. Therefore, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Motion passes five to zero. Thank you very much. And this board is now in recess until 1:00.
Good afternoon. It is 1:00 by my computer, so we'll call the meeting back from recess of the Board of Commissioners for April 17th. Item 10.6 is next on the agenda. It involves the possible adoption of Resolution 2025R-043. The way we'll roll this out is our county manager, I believe Jennifer Davidson, is presenting on behalf of staff with the assistance of Jerry, Jeremy Hutchins and our attorney, A.J. Haynes, Deputy District Attorney, after which time we'll allow the commissioners to ask any questions of staff that we might have. And then subsequently to that, we'll have Mr. Park and whoever give their presentation. Do you have any idea, Mr. Park, how long you think you might need? No? I don't want to shortchange you at all. We'll not, we won't hold you to that, so, okay? If it runs over, then it runs over, okay? I just don't want, you know? So, we'll accommodate that. And after that, we will then go to public comment and ask the public to weigh in. That'll be three minutes each. The timer will be handled by Commissioner Rice. And then after public comment, we will bring it back to the board. There may be questions from this board for staff after that time or Mr. Park at that time. And then we'll bring, come back and render our decision, right? So, okay. Everybody got that? So, with that, I'll read this into the agenda and Ms. Davidson, you can proceed. For possible action, I believe Commissioner Hales, is she back online with us?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay. Good, good. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate your attendance today. Discussion to adopt Resolution 2025R-043 authorizing eminent domain proceedings to acquire certain real property or interests in real property along the Mueller Parkway right-of-way from Park Ranch Holdings for the construction of Mueller Parkway and associated improvements, including approximately .7 acres of real property to accommodate culverts and aroundabout, a temporary construction easement, and an easement across properties adversely impacted from flooding. Once again, being presented by County Manager Jennifer Davidson, assisted by Jeremy Hutchins, our county engineer, and A.J. Haynes, our Deputy District Attorney. Ms. Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Members of the Commission, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. Here to speak to you on an agenda item related to eminent domain. I will just, as some background information on this agenda item, share with the County Commission that we do not make this recommendation lightly today. This is an important policy consideration and conversation for the County Commission, so I wanted to provide some general overview before we get into the specific details of what we're asking you to do today. But I will just initially state that we do not bring this before you lightly. We understand that this has real impacts for real individuals in the room today and you will have an opportunity to hear from them as well. So, with that, I'm going to get into, our first slide here is a discussion on the specific policy considerations prior to authorizing us today to proceed with eminent domain action. Eminent domain is the power of government to take private property for public use following payment of just compensation. And, Mr. Vice Chair, I do apologize to the Commission. I will be reading quite a bit from my notes today. There's a lot of important material for us to cover and I want to make sure that we, that we cover all of the relevant information that is important for you to consider. So, first policy consideration for the County Commission. The board should consider the use of eminent domain and whether or not it is appropriate, specifically with regard to whether or not there is a legitimate public purpose for our actions. The use of eminent domain may be justified when it serves a legitimate public purpose. Projects like infrastructure development, roads, bridges, public transportation, and flood mitigation projects benefit a large number of people and contribute to the overall well-being of the community. Second thing for the County Commission to keep in mind is respect for individual property rights. The right to private property is a fundamental aspect of individual liberty and autonomy. Therefore, the government may not take private property without a legitimate public purpose and just compensation. Eminent domain should be exercised with restraint and respect for the property owner's dignity and attachment to their land. In this presentation, county staff will show how the county has explored less intrusive alternatives before recommending to the County Commission that we, that you authorize eminent domain proceedings. Third, we ask that you consider, any eminent domain process should be transparent and should include due process. Responsible local governance demands transparency and fairness in all government actions. Government must ensure that the process of eminent domain is transparent with clear justifications for the taking, open communication with the property owner, and adherence to due process. This includes providing adequate notice, opportunities for property owners to be heard, and a fair legal process to challenge the taking of the, or of the amount of compensation. Additionally, the amount of compensation should be considered. The Fifth Amendment explicitly requires just compensation. Just compensation is defined in NRS Chapter 37, "is that sum of money necessary to place the property owner in the same position monetarily as if the property had never been taken." Government should be accountable, and the last is accountability and restraint. Government should be accountable for their decisions regarding eminent domain and exercise its power with restraint. There are safeguards built into this process to ensure government acts appropriately. This is just the first step. The eminent domain process includes mechanisms for oversight, judicial review, and public scrutiny to prevent abuse. The county considers eminent domain to be an option of last resort and not a tool for arbitrary or self-serving purposes. All right. This slide is an overview of what we are asking you to consider today. Under a 2019, under our 2019 agreement with Park Ranch Holdings, the county is responsible for building two lanes of Mueller Parkway between Point A in the north and Point B in the south, as shown on this map, with seven access points by December 2025. To complete the project as planned, the county needs additional land, as we will describe in this presentation. County staff notified PRH in June 2024 that additional property might be needed and followed up with a formal offer on February 2025, based on an independent appraisal. However, as of April, Park Ranch Holdings has not responded to the offer, prompting the county to, to prepare for this next step. If approved, the resolution allows the county to begin the legal process of acquiring the land while- land while still keeping the door open for a voluntary agreement with Park Ranch Holdings. Staff will continue to work to minimize the amount of property required and maintain open communication with the landowner throughout the process. The total amount of land that is the subject of the discussion today includes .7 acres of real property, valued at $166,900 by an independent third-party appraiser. This consists of small portions of land along the road alignment for irrigation, drainage, and road design elements, including an elevated road surface and a roundabout. Additionally, because the county plans to construct Mueller Parkway north of Buckeye at a higher elevation than the existing ground, floodwater from the Buckeye Wash during a 100-year flood event will be redirected from the southwest side of Mueller Parkway, where the Buckeye Farms development is currently planned, to agricultural fields owned by Park Ranch Holdings to the north. It is anticipated, as a result, there will be an increase in the base flood elevation by more than one foot in certain areas on the northeastern side of Mueller Parkway, totaling approximately 1.3 acres of land. A one-foot increase in base flood elevation is defined as an adverse impact by county code, and the county should compensate the owner being adversely affected. The value of the adverse impact was determined by the appraiser to be $20,000. The total estimated cost to acquire the property and the associated easements is $186,900, as determined by the appraiser. Mueller Parkway appears in the Douglas County Master Plan, Strategic Plan, Transportation Plan, the Valley Vision Plan, and the Minden and Gardinerville Plans for Prosperity, not just because it would be a nice piece of infrastructure for us to have. Mueller is critical from a land use and infrastructure planning perspective, because it is needed as an alternative route to reduce traffic on 395 and improve levels of service at key intersections that are currently failing or close to failing. Similar to East Valley and Jacks Valley Roads, Mueller will provide critical access in and around downtown. Mueller is critical infrastructure needed to serve the receiving area and future development and improve pedestrian and bike safety. In addition, Mueller is a tool for flood management, and coupled with flood infrastructure improvements upstream, it will reduce the risk of flooding to existing and proposed developments. Finally, as I mentioned on the previous slide, the county has a deadline to construct two lanes of Mueller by the end of this year. Proceeding with our plans avoids the possible loss of the right-of-way needed to construct Mueller Parkway. And yes, Mueller Parkway will have the added benefit of also enhancing economic development and preserving the distinctive character of our downtowns in Minden and Gardinerville. The callouts on this slide show the various locations of encroachment along the road alignment. The easement for adverse impact is located to the north of Mueller on these pieces here. I'm not sure, should we do a laser pointer?
Yeah.
Do you mind just pointing these out while I read? So, Mr. Hutchings is highlighting for you the easements for adverse impact that are located on the north of Mueller. At this point in the presentation, with your permission, Mr. Vice Chairman, I will turn it over to our county engineer, Mr. Hutchings, to explain in greater detail why this land is needed and the steps the county has taken to redesign the road to limit the amount of the encroachment.
Please do.
Thank you, Jen. Jeremy Hutchings, county engineer. So, yeah, let's take a little deeper dive. I'm going to read from my notes so they don't pop up on the screen. So, the first location, at least this laser pointer, so I'll be kind of crossways here. Taking a closer look at the first location near the intersection with Buckeye Road, the yellow area highlights, identifies the fill slope onto Park Ranch Holdings land necessary to elevate Mueller, Mueller Parkway. And as Jen mentioned, we're actually working to try to reduce even this amount. Second area is about .03 acres in size. I've highlighted it in a red box, and if you look inside the box, you'll see the, kind of rate where the pointer is. Shows where the encroachment is needed. That's an irrigation culvert. Third encroachment, again, for irrigation, .02 acres in size, real similar to the other slide where you've got an irrigation pipe that it projects out into the land. And next slide. So this slide shows encroachments four and five, about .04 acres in size, and you can see the culverts here and here. Next slide. This is actually a stormwater culvert, and you can see the culvert here and a small encroachment of about .01 acres just into the culvert. And that is next to, this structure is Mr. Park's hay barn, I believe. Next slide. Now we're back to the intersection at Buckeye Road, and you can see the encroachment from the fill slope. Here's the right-of-way, and you can see how it's encroaching outside that right-of-way. And that's the embankment, more embankment for the road. Next slide. So this is heading south, and the encroachment of the fill slope as the road transitions out, you know, back to wholly within the right-of-way, you can see there's some fill slope there that we need to acquire as well. So, the ninth encroachment's primarily irrigation, but it will also carry some stormwater in large event, .02 acres in size, again, very, trying to limit the amount of encroachment we're doing. And that would be necessary at the full build-out of Mueller. Right now, it's not needed, but it would be when Mueller's built out. And then, next slide. So as Jen mentioned, adverse impact is defined in code as an increase in the flooding depth by 12 inches or more. Typically, this is the 100-year storm. Small red areas, you can see the red highlights here as I'm moving my cursor around, even down here. So the small areas represent adverse impact as determined by the model, and it's, the easement area is about 1.3 acres in total size. I draw your attention to about three quarters of an acre of the adversely impacted areas located on parcel already identified in Section 5.9 of the Development Agreement as a detention pond is shaded in blue over here. So, the Development Agreement identifies that area as a possible detention pond, and that's where quite a bit of that inverse impact is occurring. We did have our consultant examine the impact of installing a pond at this location, and there was not enough impact to eliminate the adverse impact. The yellow areas, about 14 acres in size, represent increased flood depths between 6 and 12 inches, which are below the adverse impact threshold as defined by code. Most of these areas appear to be flood-irrigated today. And now I believe we're going to transition over to Mr. Haynes for the next slide to talk about what the agreement says about detention ponds.
Yeah, A.J. Haynes, for the record, this is the section of code that Jeremy just mentioned, not of code, sorry, of the Development Agreement that Jeremy just mentioned. It's Section 5.9, and it says that although county intends to install certain drainage facilities in conjunction with Mueller Parkway, additional detention ponds may be required on owner's parcels in the area zoned industrial immediately east of the property. That was the parcel we just identified there. Owner and county agree to use their best efforts to determine the size and location of such detention ponds and ensure their timely construction, including consultation with and approval from the Douglas County Water Conveyance Advisory Committee. Parties further acknowledge that because such detention ponds will materially benefit both the property and the county, the parties will share equally the cost of constructing such ponds with the owner. So it was anticipated at the time of the Development Agreement that that parcel would be needed for floodwater. And the parties actually agreed that if a detention pond was going to be constructed there, that they would share in the cost of that pond. As Jeremy indicated, the pond isn't proven to be feasible, but that parcel still does need to be used for holding floodwater. And so actually, what the county is doing is going above and beyond what the Development Agreement requires, as the Development Agreement requires the parties to split the cost of any infrastructure there. We're not installing infrastructure, we're just using it for floodwater, and yet the county is offering to pay for an easement on that parcel that was previously identified for floodwater storage.
Here's a look at the adopted floodplain today. The shades of blue represent the primary floodplain. Neighborhood one is approximately outlined in red, Neighborhood one of Buckeye Farms. You can see how the floodplain impacts this development, as well as Mr. Pegram's parcel just to the west. Thank you, Jen. The Buckeye Creek watershed is about 74 square miles in size and produces a flow rate of about 3,940 cubic feet per second during the 100-year storm. Sometimes these numbers can be difficult to visualize. For reference purposes, the flow from Buckeye Creek alone would fill an Olympic-sized swimming pool in approximately 22 seconds. Another way to think of this flow rate is it's about 1,200 fire hydrants running full blast. The Pine Nut Creek watershed is about 55 square miles in size and produces about 5,150 cubic feet per second during the 100-year storm. The conveyance channel shown schematically in the road section as part of the Development Agreement was expected to convey approximately 300 to 400 cubic feet per second. This should handle only about 10% of the flood flow from the Buckeye Creek alone. The channel by itself would not be adequate to mitigate flooding. Here's a look at the proposed floodplain once our current design for Mueller is built. Again, the blue shade represents primary floodplain. As you can see, Mueller acts as a levee, pushing flood flows north, and while the risk of flooding is not eliminated, it significantly reduces the amount of flooding on Neighborhood One and Mr. Pegram's parcel. And I think, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, just for reference, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record, for those who were tracking, this would be the, Neighborhood One, thank you. Totally droop, like, on that. And this is Mr. Pegram's parcel. So, looking back at the floodplain, we show water moving through both Neighborhood One and Mr. Pegram's pieces prior to the construction of Mueller Lane, as we have proposed the current design. After, you can see the water is routed around Mueller Parkway, because Mueller acts like a levee, hence the need for the flood easements that we are requesting and the adverse impact compensation, because we are pushing the water from the south side of Mueller, routing it around to the north. Significant improvements to Buckeye Farms One and also to Mr. Pegram's. Peace. All right. As Mr. Hutchings explains, the Buckeye Farms' planned development is located in the floodplain. Floodwater needs to be relocated to mitigate impacts on planned development. The Buckeye Farms' specific plan shows area where water will be redirected is designated as floodplain native pasture. You can see that here in the specific plan. Much of the land and easements required will also benefit Park Ranch Holdings. Specifically, the callouts labeled as callouts two through five are all needed to route irrigation water to and from fields owned by Park Ranch Holdings. Additionally, callouts 10 through 13 are the necessary flood easements that will protect Buckeye Farms' development from flooding. At this point in the presentation, Mr. Vice Chairman, I would like to turn it over to Deputy District Attorney A.J. Haynes to outline for the Board the county's obligations under the Development Agreement, and following his comments, Mr. Hutchings will explain what steps the county has taken to explore less intrusive alternatives to mitigate the encroachment of the Mueller Parkway design on Park Ranch Holdings.
Thank you, Ms. Davidson. A.J. Haynes, for the record. First, I did want to first address the drainage ditch or canal that's been mentioned a few times and was brought up by PRH in the material that they submitted, which is in your supplemental packet. First, to reiterate what Jeremy just said, the amount of water that is projected to flow into the canal that Park Ranch is advocating for is almost 4,000 CFS from the Buckeye Wash, plus approximately 5,000 CFS from the Pine Nut Wash, which would be a total of 9,000 CFS from both. But, as Mr. Hutchings indicated, the canal, if constructed today, can only be built to accommodate 400 CFS. So that's just 10% of the capacity that you need to actually convey just the Buckeye Creek flows, and less than 5% of the capacity that you'd need to also convey the Pine Nut Creek flows. In short, if the canal were constructed today, it would not protect Park Ranch property or any other property from flood events. So what's the solution? The solution is, and always has been, to build Mueller in phases and in conjunction with upstream storage. What you see on the screen in front of you is an excerpt from the ordinance that was passed when the Development Agreement was passed by this board in 2019. It says, "The right-of-way," talking about the Mueller Parkway right-of-way, "will accommodate a four-lane road, multimodal paths, and drainage facilities. This infrastructure," meaning the road, the paths, the facilities, "coupled with the construction of additional drainage infrastructure upstream in the Pine Nut and Buckeye washes would likely remove the eastern areas of the towns of Minden and Gardinerville from the current floodplain." Now, the larger Mueller Parkway right-of-way that we negotiated, in other words, is essentially the primary benefit that we received from the 2019 Development Agreement. The county negotiated that right-of-way so that we would have a place to build all that you can see on this screen here, the four lanes, the bike lanes, the multi-use path, the median, and a canal. Not just two lanes, not just two lanes in a canal, but ultimately what you see in front of you. That is the goal of the county. And that is the county's right. That was the benefit of our bargain with Park Ranch. That was the main reason why we entered into the Development Agreement at all, was so that we would have the right and ability to construct these improvements. What Park Ranch Holdings is trying to do, however, in their supplemental material that was submitted, is turn that benefit, that contractual right, upside down and use it against the county and its taxpayers by turning it into an obligation. A contractual right is different from a contractual obligation. The county wanted the right to address regional drainage issues, and the canal that Park Ranch is advocating for could be one of the many effective tools to address those issues. But the county never obligated itself to construct that canal or to do so within any specific timeframe. The county only agreed to construct two lanes of Mueller Parkway. Why didn't the county obligate itself? Well, because, as you've already heard, it's impossible to construct a canal that would actually convey all of the water that would flow into it. So it literally doesn't make sense to build such a canal at this time. The county has commenced with plans that would actually ultimately lead to a control of floodwater in this area and might render the use of the canal beneficial. The county has commenced plans to build upstream drainage infrastructure. The county has already purchased two large parcels along the Pine Nut Wash and has identified other parcels for acquisition along the Buckeye Wash. But the construction of drainage infrastructure in these upstream locations is still a few years away. Hence, the county negotiated for the right to build a drainage canal in the future when, it could be, as you see here, coupled with the construction of additional drainage infrastructure upstream in the Pine Nut and Buckeye washes. The county never accepted an obligation to build the canal, especially not within any particular timeframe, as has been indicated. Doing so would not have made sense, and it still doesn't make sense. To understand the county's actual contractual obligations, you have to only turn to the Development Agreement itself. First, this is Section 1.3 of the Development Agreement, and for the record, you do have the entire Development Agreement, both in your packet, and I think it was also submitted with some annotations by Park Ranch, and that's included in your supplemental packet. This section here was included with the recitals of the agreement, and it talks about the purposes and objectives of the 2019 Development Agreement. Among other things, the purpose of the agreement was for Park Ranch to dedicate Among other things, the purpose of the agreement was for Park Ranch to dedicate a new 205-foot public right-of-way across the property for Mueller Parkway and drainage improvements. Park Ranch would also dedicate a new public right-of-way across another parcel immediately north of the existing right-of-way to increase the width of Mueller Parkway in that section by 105 feet. Park Ranch would also grant an easement to the county on another parcel for the purpose of installing drainage culverts below Highway 88. The agreement was designed to establish the financial obligations of each party to construct Mueller Parkway through the Ashland property, and then it was designed to set a deadline. And it's just, there's only one deadline in the development agreement that the county is obligated to comply with, and that is the deadline for the county to construct at least two lanes of Mueller Parkway. Nowhere in that section does the agreement state an intention or a purpose to impose upon the county a duty or obligation to build a canal or any additional infrastructure beyond the two lanes that the county is working to build at this time. This is Section 5.3 from the development agreement. This is in the section that talks about the obligations of Park Ranch. And essentially, 5.3 talks about Park Ranch's duty, and now it's been transferred to Ashland Park, to contribute to the construction of two lanes of Mueller along the Ashland piece of Mueller Parkway. But here again, before it gets into that cost-share analysis, it reiterates what the county's obligation is, and that is to construct two lanes of Mueller Parkway. Section 6 of the development agreement does outline the county's obligations. This is the entire section here for you to consider. I just want to highlight a couple points. You can see right off the bat, the county must commence and substantially complete the construction of two lanes of Mueller Parkway. And then if you skip down to the next sentence, "The county shall also construct two lanes of Mueller Parkway within the deeded right-of-way across the Ashland Park property." So the county is obligated to construct essentially two pieces of Mueller: a northern section, which it pays for entirely, and a southern section, which it splits the cost of. But in each instance, those sections are limited to two lanes. That's the county's actual obligation under the development agreement. This is the rest of that. Section 6.1, again, "County shall complete the construction of both segments, the northern and southern piece, as described above, within six years of the effective date." Well, how is it described above? It's described as two lanes. This is the six-year effective date time limitation. This only applies to those two lanes of Mueller Parkway. If you skip down to the bottom of this section, then you can see the result of not constructing two lanes, failure by the county to timely construct Mueller Parkway as set forth in the agreement shall constitute a default, which if uncured, shall result in the reversion to owner of all rights of way conveyed to county by owner pursuant to this agreement, with the exception of an unrelated parcel, unrelated to Mueller Parkway. So nowhere, and I want to reiterate, nowhere in the development agreement is there an obligation placed upon the county to construct anything other than two lanes of Mueller Parkway with access points to the Park Ranch property. That is the county's obligation. The county does intend to build more than two lanes at a later date. That is why the county negotiated for the larger right-of-way. That is the primary benefit to the county of the development agreement. But that benefit is not the same as an obligation that's now somehow owed to Park Ranch or any other person. Now, Park Ranch has indicated in their supplemental material that the county does have to build a canal because it's depicted in a preliminary drawing, which is attached to an exhibit to the development agreement, and that exhibit was included in the development agreement for the purpose of showing where Park Ranch's seven access points should be located. But that exhibit also shows what you saw before: the extra lanes, the multimodal path, et cetera. Using Park Ranch's logic, the county would be, should have to be obligated to build all of those extra improvements, not just the canal. But Park Ranch knows that that position is absurd because it's contradicted by the clear and unambiguous language of the development agreement, which requires only that the county construct two lanes of Mueller Parkway. So Park Ranch hasn't taken that position. They've just taken the position that we have to build two lanes and a canal, even though that that is not written anywhere within the development agreement. And to reiterate again, there are practical impediments to building such a canal, even if we wanted to do so at this time. As previously discussed, a canal cannot be built to accommodate all of the water that would flow into it, and it would not be useful in protecting the community from certain flood events. Another practical impediment, which we haven't mentioned yet, is that portions of the right-of-way that Park Ranch deeded to the county are actually already encumbered by the Lower Old Virginia Canal. So even if the canal could handle the water, which it can't, there's currently no way to build that canal within the portion of right-of-way that was granted by Park Ranch to the county. All right. Moving on beyond the issue of the canal, Section 5.1 here, this is just another relevant section that applies to what we're doing today. And it says, down at the bottom, "The parties agree to negotiate in good faith for the acquisition of additional right-of-way..." Oh, lost my spot. "...additional right-of-way necessitated by external requirements without the use of eminent domain proceedings. County shall pay to owner the fair market value of such additional right-of-way should it become required." That's the county's position that this applied, and that the parties should have negotiated in good faith for the acquisition of additional right-of-way needed. Park Ranch has refused to engage with the county in any type of negotiation for the very minimal amount of right-of-way that we need. So it's the county's position that they violated this section. Park Ranch's position is that this section does not apply because, if you see in the sentence above, there's a notation about federal funding. According to Park Ranch, because federal funding is not being used for the construction of Mueller Parkway, this section does not apply, which is fine. But if that is their position, there's no way they can also rely on this section, as they're attempting to do, to say that we cannot use eminent domain proceedings. Essentially, they're saying this section does apply, and the county can't use eminent domain, but it also doesn't apply, and we don't have to sell you any property. You can't have it both ways. Either this section applies, and Park Ranch is obligated to negotiate with the county in good faith for additional right-of-way, which it hasn't done, or this section doesn't apply, and the county is not prohibited from using eminent domain proceedings when necessary to complete its contractual obligations. Next section. This is another very relevant section. This section shows two things. First, the county's offer to Park Ranch actually exceeds the requirements of the development agreement. And second, Park Ranch is withholding from the county rights that were already granted. So if you see in the first part of this, Section 5.7, it says, "During the term of this agreement and upon advance notice, owner shall permit the county and its agents, employees, and contractors to enter upon the property," that's capital P property, that's Park Ranch property, "and/or another parcel for the purpose of conducting survey work, drainage studies, site visits, and similar undertakings reasonably related to the funding and construction of Mueller Parkway." So we'll stop right there for a second. Park Ranch has already agreed by the terms of this development agreement to allow the county access through its property for the construction of Mueller Parkway. That's what we just read. Now, Park Ranch disagrees with that interpretation of the contract, and they're refusing to give the county access to construct Mueller Parkway. In an effort to work with Park Ranch, we have offered to pay for temporary construction easements, even though they're already granted to the county by this section. Moving on, we're also able to install and maintain culverts or other drainage facilities upon the property. Now, again, property capitalized, that's Park Ranch's property. We, the county, have the right, under the development agreement, to install and maintain culverts and drainage facilities upon the Park Ranch property. We have taken the position that that allows us to install the culverts and other drainage infrastructure that Mr. Hutchings just showed to you. Park Ranch obviously disagrees. So in an effort to work with Park Ranch, what we have offered to do here is to purchase from Park Ranch those small sections of property, so that when those culverts are installed, they're actually installed on county property. Again, we're going above and beyond what the development agreement requires in an effort to work with Park Ranch on this issue. So those are just some of the primary sections that I did want to highlight and discuss with you. In conclusion, though, I just want to reiterate that the county negotiated the ability to construct improvements that will benefit the community, not just a canal, but four lanes of Mueller Parkway, and other infrastructure like a multimodal use path. However, those benefits that the county received are not obligations now owed to Park Ranch on some timeline. The only obligation that the county owes to Park Ranch on the six-year timeline that was described is the obligation to build two lanes of Mueller Parkway, which is precisely what we're trying to do. And the reason that we're now coming to you for authorization to commence the eminent domain process is so that we can fulfill that contractual obligation and construct those two lanes of Mueller Parkway.
Thank you, A.J. Before I talk about this slide, I'd just like to acknowledge our... The county has hired Chad Anson with CA Group. He's in the back right, from my perspective. Chad, maybe you could...
Raise your hand.
Thank you. So what steps have been taken in broad strokes, I suppose? The original design kind of crowded that southwest corner or side of the right-of-way. Makes sense. Floods are coming from the east. Some existing neighborhoods are on the east. So we're trying to preserve as much right-of-way for future improvements as possible. Also buffers existing homes. I call it the orchard area, but it's, I think it's actually Stone Gate has some residential homes and maybe a little bit off of Orchard as well. So by crowding that southwest side of the right-of-way, it gives more of a buffer to those residences that are out there today. Redesign, so this kind of also ties into the timeline. In October of 2023, roughly, Park Ranch signs the original permit for improvements.
Just to interject here, I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Chairman, if I may just interject here. Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. For those who may have not been following along as this process has unfolded since 2023, originally, in that timeframe, Park Ranch Holdings indicated a desire to construct Mueller Parkway. And it was a right that they had in the development agreement. There was either the county could move forward with the construction within the timeline or Park Ranch Holdings could move forward with the construction within the timeline. Park Ranch Holdings indicated a desire to do so, and so we worked with them and provided them with the plan set that Jeremy is, excuse me, Mr. Hutchings, is referencing in his comments today. That is the original design that he referenced on the left. So with that, Mr. Park signs a permit to complete the improvements as they were designed and submits that application to the county, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Hutchings.
Thank you. Correct. So May, approximately, Park Ranch had rescinded that permit, jumping back over to the left side of the screen here. Yeah, one of the reasons was encroachment of that fill in the, I would call it, well, the first phase we're working on today, that Phil Slope was encroaching on his property. And I believe, I mean, he's here, he can speak for himself, but that, he felt that was unnecessary. The county entered into a change order for Mr. Anson and CA Group to redesign that section and relocate it, the road further outside, or flip-flop, I called it, due to the other two lanes. So we did work on that redesign. We're also continually to try to minimize the amount of encroachment. Mr. Anson is also working today on another, finalizing a change order to try to reduce the amount of encroachment around the roundabout at Buckeye. So work's also started. Phase one is underway. You can go out there and see equipment and see dirt getting turned. The power poles on Buckeye have been relocated in preparation of the design we have. So the other dates are, kind of speak to the timelines of the request to acquire. About June, the county sent Park Ranch Holdings the notice about, hey, you know, I might need some more land here. February, we worked through the summer into the fall to complete the appraisal, and it was completed in February. May the offer in March, as you can see there, March 20th, 24th was kind of a decline to negotiate from Park, is how I interpret it. And then April 3rd, we alerted Park Ranch Holdings of this meeting, as required by noticing, and that brings us up to today. So that's, there has been a lot, just to reiterate, there has been a lot of design and thought into it, then redesign to try to, you know, lessen the amount of impact on the land and encroachment. And then I think with that, I'll turn it back to Jen, Mrs. Davidson.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchings. So what are our options that the board can consider today? The first option the board may consider is to take no action. If we do nothing, Mueller Parkway will not get built by the end of the year, and the right-of-way may revert back to Park Ranch Holdings. That would be harmful to the county and also to Park Ranch Holdings, who needs Mueller to serve future plan development. And I will just say, as I go through each of the options, I think it's appropriate to assume that while we may elect to do nothing, we would remain committed to continuing to work with Mr. Park to arrive at a reasonable solution that was acceptable to both parties. The second option would be potentially to proceed with the eminent domain process. As we have explained in this presentation, staff do believe eminent domain is appropriate. The road is for the public good. We are offering to pay. We significantly reduce the amount of the road encroachments outside of the right-of-way through our efforts to redesign and adjust the road based on Park Ranch Holdings' feedback. We will continue to limit the adverse impact from flooding by coupling our efforts to construct Mueller with ongoing efforts to install flood drainage infrastructure upstream to capture more of the water generated closer to the source. We still maintain the right to add future drainage infrastructure within the right-of-way. Our third option is we could redesign the road. We could continue to redesign the road by removing the planned roundabout at Buckeye and Mueller, or by shifting the road over further. However, that would result in the construction of the road that would ultimately not meet the future and current needs of the community. We could construct the road at grade, leaving the floodwater where it is today, causing the road to overtop in a flooding event. But that would negatively impact existing and future developments. Additionally, these redesigns will cost more time and funds that may make it impossible to complete the construction by the deadline. We are entitled to an extension of time from Park Ranch Holdings due to delays caused by FEMA. However, to date, Park Ranch Holdings has refused to grant such an extension. The fourth option is the county could continue to pursue and implement upstream storage solutions coupled with the construction of Mueller, as was stated in the ordinance adopting the agreement. However, it will take time and resources to address the total volume of water through in the Buckeye and Pine Nut washes, totaling more than 9,000 CFS combined in a 100-year flooding event. While it remains our intent to implement regional flooding solutions and to allocate county resources to mitigate regional flooding impacts for the greatest number of residents over time, our current obligation in the development agreement is to construct two lanes of Mueller Parkway by the end of this year. Circling back to the policy considerations that we began this presentation with, I again state to the board that we do not take this conversation lightly. The board should consider the following. The construction of Mueller Parkway is, as designed, serves a legitimate public purpose, and the encroachment and easements required to complete the design are necessary. Mueller is an important transportation connection for the public good. The road will also divert flood risk away from the existing and proposed development. Two, we did consider the individual property rights in this matter. While this item is a taking of property, it is not without just compensation. Further, there will be significant benefits from the project to the Buckeye Farms' development and to Park Ranch Holdings. Construction of the road should enhance the Buckeye Farm project as it provides access to the larger road network of the county. And while the flooding does increase on water on Park Ranch agricultural parcels, it also serves to protect the development the owner has proposed in Neighborhood one. Third, we have conducted a transparent process, and we are using due process throughout. Park Ranch Holdings was part of the development agreement, which contemplates additional land may be needed. Park Ranch Holdings signed the original SIP in October of 2023. Park Ranch Holdings was alerted... Park Ranch Holdings was alerted in June of 2024 and again in March of 2025 regarding the county's plans. Douglas County offered to purchase the required right-of-way and easements at the fair market value established by independent appraisal. Park Ranch Holdings did not respond, and time is of the essence. Today, we are having a public hearing to consider whether it is appropriate to proceed with the eminent domain process. Park Ranch Holdings and their representatives will also be invited to speak to you to share the relevant information they think you consider. Park Ranch Holdings will continue to play a significant role in the eminent domain proceedings in court if this commission decides it's appropriate for us to proceed. Next, in terms of just compensation. The appraised value of the property and the adverse impact is, as defined in county code, has been offered. Park Ranch Holdings has the right to counter the county's offer and will participate in the eminent domain process to establish the appropriate amount for just compensation with oversight by the court. Finally, accountability and restraint has been exercised in this matter. The process for noticing has been followed. Staff explored less intrusive alternatives before recommending the board pursue eminent domain. Staff redesigned more than half the alignment to reduce the impact on Park Ranch Holdings and continues to try to minimize this impact, and will continue to try to work with Park Ranch Holdings to arrive at a mutually agreeable solution. If the resolution is adopted by the board today, this is not a taking of Park Ranch Holdings' property today. It is authorizing the county to proceed with a legal process. Ultimately, the court will determine whether the eminent domain action is justified and the appropriate amount of compensation. For all of those reasons, as we've shared with you today and discussed in this presentation, it is staff's recommendation that the board adopt the resolution as presented based on public comment and the discussion of the county commissioners, and also direct staff to continue to work with Park Ranch Holdings to determine an appropriate resolution to move forward. With that, Mr. Vice Chairman, I turn it over to the commission for any questions you may have and/or the presentation by Park Ranch Holdings and their representative.
Commissioner Hales, do you have any questions for staff at this time?
I don't have questions. I appreciate the very thoughtful and comprehensive presentation.
Thank you. Commissioner Tolbert, do you have any questions for staff?
No, and I would just like to disclose that this has been presented to us in our one-on-ones before the meetings, so we were able to get very in-depth and answers, questions answered at that time, which is part of the reason why we don't have questions now.
Commissioner Tarkanian.
Just one. A.J., when you were talking, Mr. Hames, when you were talking about the obligations for the county, you said the only obligation they had at this time was, or it maybe said it all, was to do the two roads. But according to the developers' agreement, there's an obligation to handle the drainage issues, right?
No. A.J. Hames, to the record, there's no obligation to, beyond cooperating on the industrial parcel and sharing costs of any improvements there, there are some requirements to ensure that irrigation water passes underneath Mueller so that they can continue to irrigate fields on the west side of Mueller Parkway. But there is no obligation to construct any specific drainage infrastructure, and especially not within any specific time limit.
Yeah, I'm not talking about timeline. We discussed that earlier. But, I mean, Mr. Park sent us a public, a sumo, what do you call it, public comment. And in it, he attached the ordinance, and in it, he yelted in a lot of different lines. And at least a half dozen places, it talked about that Mr. Park or Park Holdings was going to provide this land, and the county was going to build Mueller Parkway, drain multimodal pathways, and drainage. It says at least a half a dozen times in there. Now, it doesn't say what type of drainage work it's going to do, but there's certainly an implication that it was going to handle certain drainage issues.
Yeah, I would agree that we are handling certain drainage issues. One of the pieces of property that we are asking you to authorize eminent domain for is a drainage culvert. But those items that you've referenced, which are mentioned in the ordinance, not in the development agreement itself, those are the county's goals and objectives. The reason why the county acquired this right-of-way was to accomplish all the things that you discussed, the four lanes, the pathway, the drainage.
I don't disagree, which I think is an important comment that you made about, that's why we're here today, to figure out how to handle this drainage issue. Because, but I see that as an obligation on the county's part based upon the ordinance. Now, it's my understanding the ordinance is pretty similar to what is in development agreement according to our Assistant District Attorney. So I just wanted, I mean, make sure that was clear. We have to find an answer to this, to the drainage issues, to what extent and how is open, according to what is in that ordinance, and not only that, but good government, too. And one of the proposals is what we have today. That's what I was trying to get across. Did you disagree with that?
I think in theory, we're on the same page. I think I would distinguish between rights and benefits that we've negotiated versus obligations we owe to Park Ranch as the other party to the agreement, which I've already discussed. But I agree that we are trying to achieve drainage solutions for the county, and that the ditch is a tool that the county is looking at to try to achieve those goals.
I only have three questions, but not for county staff. My three questions are for Mr. Park. Number one, why are we here? What do you want? And what can we do to make you happy and stop your resistance to Mueller Parkway? Those are the three questions on my mind. What can we do so that we can all meet? There's got to be a resolution, and that is for when you, when it's your turn, sir. I just want to let you know where my mind is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marison. I don't know that I have, I, if we don't, so as I understand it in your presentation, if we don't build the roundabout at Buckeye, we're not going to encroach on Park Ranch Holdings building. Is that correct?
No, it's not correct. So the encroachment consists of fill slope from the roundabout, so that would eliminate that. But it also consists of culverts for irrigation.
Okay, so we have several other points of interest, but a primary one, a primary one is the roundabout. The other, the, okay.
And the adverse impact, don't forget about that.
And if we build it grade, we leave Phase One of Park Buckeye Farms in the floodplain, and also, according to this map, we leave the north end of Montero in the floodplain. Is that, if we build it at grade?
Correct.
Mr. Vice Chairman, if I may?
Okay.
Just to expand on your question, sir, and I appreciate you asking it, relevant to the roundabout, the roundabout is important, an important consideration from the county from a transportation planning standpoint. Traffic control, I'm not going to do a very good job describing engineering, but intersections have certain standards based on flow traffic count. And it is likely that that intersection will need to either be a roundabout or a signalized intersection very shortly after we construct it, if we do not construct it as a roundabout. So while I listed among my many, not many, among the handful of options I provided to you today, the option to redesign to eliminate the roundabout at that location, I would tell you, it, traffic control of some type is going to have to happen here, and it is possible that I would still need to encroach with a signal. And it is the recommendation of our traffic engineer that a roundabout is the best design for this location. Is that fair, Mr. Hutchings? Do you have anything else to add?
Thank you, Jen. No, that's, that's fair.
I didn't want to go that deep into it, other than to say that, in my estimation, our community is more interested, the public comment that I've gotten back, is more interested in making sure that we have a roundabout there versus a four-way stop sign or signal. A roundabout is desirable at that location. That's what I've gotten out of the public in that regard. So, so I don't see that, any changes to that as being an option. I just want to be very clear, and this is to A.J. Hames, there is no timetable whatsoever in the development agreement that requires Douglas County to activate the other two lanes nor the drainage dishes. Is that a correct statement?
Yes, Commissioner, that's correct.
So the only thing that we're contractually required in this development agreement is to build two lanes of Mueller Parkway between Toler and Hayboran, basically, by the end of this year.
That is also correct.
Okay.
I got to jump in on this. I just don't see how that's accurate. The development agreement, the ordinance that I read and discussed with legal counsel, which he says is similar to the development agreement, states clearly that we have to handle, that part of the county's responsibility is the drainage issues. Now, it doesn't have a timeframe to do it, but there's a reasonableness that is put into every contract, that it has to be done within a reasonable period of time where we're not putting our residents at risk. So, I mean, we have an obligation to find a solution to this problem. And even if we didn't in the contract, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, see how nice I'm being, we should just because we want to take good care of our residents. So we have to find a solution to this right now.
In response to that, Commissioner Tarkanian, I would suggest that with our building above grade, we do take a substantial piece of property, both two developments, out of the floodplain, primarily. So, so just by, just by that sheer element itself in the, in the design, by building above grade, we do that. So Commissioner Tolbert?
I think, I agree, actually, with both of you, but under the, we're contractually obligated to finish the two lanes by December, but it still says in there that we will complete all four lanes. So I think that's the clarification Mr. Tarkanian was trying to make, is that we are still obligated to the four lanes, plus the multimodal, plus all that in there. It's just we don't have a timeline for completing that part of it. So, and that's always been my contention or question, is that if we don't have a plan and a timeline on that, who knows when it's, I mean, I grew up here, and I know how it works, so we may never have that, you know, depending on, you know, some other method of funding or something like that. And the history of kicking the can could very much come up on this with the consideration of the other two lanes and what's going on down there. So that's, I think that was the clarification, is that we don't want that to happen.
I concur with that. I concur with that observation, yes. At some point in time, I believe that we're going to need four lanes. I agree with that, at some point in time. When that time occurs. Commissioner Hales?
Yes, I, I think we've all mentioned this, and perhaps to be redundant, I just want to say, there's a very, very big difference between a contractual obligation in the development agreement and things we want to do in an ordinance. And to put things that we want to do in an ordinance, to characterize them as contractual obligations is not accurate.
It's an ordinance that we passed. That's the law that we passed.
Okay, so if we're done with our questions, I think we need to go forward with Mr. Park's presentation. Yes, please.
Thank you, Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. I would like to clarify one thing. When the appraisal and offer to purchase was sent to Park Ranch Holdings, Mr. Park, there was a response, but it came through Mr. Park's attorneys. There wasn't a direct response to the county, but there was a motion filed with the court, motion for leave to amend and supplement its supplemental complaint in intervention, kind of a tongue twister. So in essence, the attorneys for Mr. Park filed with the judge leave to amend their complaint in response to the county's appraisal and request to purchase. So in essence, Park Ranch did respond through their attorneys in court.
Okay, so the way I want to proceed here, do we need to take a quick break before we go into Mr. Park's presentation? Or, I know at some point in time, we're going to need a break. I know I'm going to need one. So I think we'll go into Mr. Park's presentation, and then before we go into public comment, then we'll take a short break, okay? So we're inviting you and to present, and you're not going to be on the clock.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Nicole Scott of Wumble Bond Dickinson, on behalf of Park Ranch. We would ask the board here to take no action until they actually have more and accurate information. We would like to correct the record and address many of the errors and incomplete information that has been said today. And at the outset, we would note that some of the materials that weren't included with the staff report, so, for example, the 2019 ordinance that Commissioner Tarkanian was referencing, 2019 1556A, was not included as part of the staff's report.
Excuse me. Could you get a little closer to the microphone? I'm having trouble hearing what you're saying.
Absolutely. Is this better? Maybe not. Is it better? We'll try this. I can also talk louder. There was also an indication that there was no response directly to the offer letter, but that also is inaccurate. While Mr. Ritchie just mentioned that there was a court filing, this rejection letter was sent directly to Mr. Hames as well. It was not just part of a filing. And also, the development agreement itself that was provided with the materials, there was a portion that Mr. Hames referenced that included a reference to Exhibit G, but if you look in the materials, it's completely illegible. For years, the county has disputed that it's still not final plans would involve a taking, until recently, when it's reversed course and gave its notice it intends to initiate a Chapter 37 proceeding. That notice was directly responding to Park Ranch's motion to amend its complaint, as Mr. Ritchie was just referring to, to assert an improper taking. But for this board to consider this item, there are numerous errors that must be corrected. So first, if you are looking at the packet at page 1018, there's a part that says easement across properties adversely impacted from flooding. Adverse impact has a county definition, but by code means that it increases the base flood elevation over one foot. So we're not talking about what happens when there's flooding that is at 11 inches, 10 inches, nine inches. That doesn't even get considered here. This is just the county's definition of adverse impact. So it's not discussing the detrimental or devastating effects of flooding at this levels. And there's no consideration for the increase in flooding from the county's decision to redirect the waters as it just stated that it was going to be doing, and flood new properties. You heard mention about alleviating Neighborhood 1, but there was no mention about Neighborhood 4 and Neighborhood 5. On the packet at pages 1018, yes, Commissioner?
I just got to ask a clarification. So four and five are part of, I assume, the development that Mr. Park is doing, and you're saying that this diversion of water will increase the water flow in those two areas?
Yes, and what was interesting in the PowerPoint that we watched is we saw just the snippet showing Neighborhood 1. We didn't see that area below and what would have changed there. And so if we jump ahead, thinking about the just compensation issue, under Chapter 37, just compensation is putting the property owner back in the same position financially as if the property had never been taken.
Sorry, I haven't quite understand. Is the proposed diversion of water by the Is the proposed diversion of water by the county going to affect the Phase 4 and Phase 5 worse than it would be if the water wasn't diverted?
Yes, and I just have rudimentary maps that I could show, but these are actually from J.E. Fuller, who is the county's consultant. So, I've got the prior, which is a light blue highlight of where things are happening right now. Neighborhood 1 has some, you could see it up top here, and then Neighborhood 4 and 5 barely have anything. And then, when you switch it, this is now the dark blue, is that Neighborhood 4 and 5. So, that is a change, but we only saw the upper level when they were during the presentation. The second part that I'd like to reference that needs to be corrected within the staff report is both at 1018 and 1022. It's talking about the future drainage channel should the county elect to construct it, and we've heard a lot today about it, it's suddenly now at the county's option. But we would reference the ordinance that we should take a step back in time. And this is a far deviation from what the county represented to the public, and it's a complete 180 from what the county represented to Mr. Park and Park Ranch that it would do. There's a reason why the 2019 amended development agreement is here. It changed the original agreement, and Mr. Park, as part of Park Ranch, expanded it to give that extra 100 feet of the right-of-way to install the drainage channel. The ordinance itself, while I hear it being referenced as just, I guess, a side note, it does say at the top, it includes the following key elements, that the development agreement would include these elements. And it says, "Deeding approximately 75.7 acres, a 205-foot width strip of real property to the county for construction of Mueller, the multimodal pass and drainage improvements." Then it says, "Including a flood conveyance channel between Mueller and the Virginia ditch extending from Toller Lane to Hayborn Road." This is what was promised to the public, this is what was promised to Park Ranch, and this is part of the reason why Park Ranch deeded extra land to the county for free. Also, if there was a legible copy of Exhibit G to the development agreement, the copy at page 1257 in the packet you cannot read, they reference that it's just to show where things would happen, but multiple times on here, it says 100-foot drainage, 100-foot drainage. There was a purpose to the extra right-of-way that was deeded. There was discussion about Park Ranch's rescinding of its site improvement plan. This omits that prior, Park Ranch had been requesting the county's plans for years. Once Park Ranch finally got the plans, saw that they were flawed, saw that it, there was no drainage channel included, and saw that it was going to flood Park Ranch and others' properties, that's when Park Ranch rescinded the site improvement plan. On page 1022, it says that the county needs this land for, to accommodate the road and drainage facilities. But why are there no designs that include the drainage channel? We understand that it is not enough now, enough water to carry now, but why is it not even being included? Why are there no designs that would fit within the existing right-of-way and the 76 acres that Park Ranch already deeded? What other designs were considered that would not involve eminent domain? If the designs were consistent with what the county represented to Park Ranch and the public, we would not be here today. Also, we would not have this costly litigation that Park Ranch was forced to intervene with, with the Ashland Park litigation. Merely, we're merely asking the county to do what it had originally promised. On page 1022, and it was also part of the presentation, the county's report says that Section 5.1 of the development agreement "contemplates this circumstance where the county might need to acquire additional right-of-way to construct the project." This is misleading at best. Section 5.1 is also at page 1225 of your materials. The third to the last sentence, which was not highlighted in the presentation, says, "The county's receipt of federal funding for the construction of Mueller Parkway may necessitate the acquisition of additional right-of-way." And then it goes on to say, "And the parties would negotiate in good faith for that acquisition if necessitated by external requirements." The county's 30B6 witness in deposition testimony, binding testimony, has stated that this only applies for federal funding requirements. There are no federal funding requirements here. There is not, this is the only reference in the development agreement that talks about additional acquisitions.
Got to interject again. I'm sorry if I'm taking away from your, your points, but if that provision only applies to federal funding, then the county has the ability to exercise eminent domain, then?
It does. Absol-, any, a county could exercise eminent domain at any chance.
That paragraph would have seemed like they waived that or said they wouldn't if they negotiated in good faith. You gotta go one or the other.
So, let's, let's clarify, because I think we're, we're playing a little bit of the hat-trick game here. We, any government agency has a power to eminent, for eminent domain. That's not the issue. What they were saying here in the development agreement is if there are federal funding requirements, and indeed, the county did apply for federal funding multiple times, and shockingly or not, it included all those drainage agreements that were now, have been lost. If the county was applying and federal funding came through and said, "Hey, you need to have an extra culvert here, or we require something different," then absolutely, there would be the obligation to negotiate in good faith, no eminent domain proceedings, because the federal funding, federal government is requiring these types of agreements.
Let me just take you a step further then.
Absolutely.
If FEMA is gonna require water to be removed from certain areas so that the county can develop it, isn't that a federal, it's not federal funding, but it's a federal requirement that's sort of necessitating this easement?
You didn't hear, and I certainly haven't heard, anything that FEMA is requiring something. The county has applied to FEMA multiple times, and it has not yet to receive approvals. And indeed, there's been a lot of discussion about whether those plans are actually faulty or going to work for the county and its residents here. So, turning back, this Section 5.1 only applies for federal funding requirements. It's disingenuous for the county to suggest that this section "contemplates the eminent domain proceedings here" and to suggest that Park Ranch has violated the development agreement by refusing to agree to sell it here. On the packet, page 1023, there's a purported timeline of communications, and we saw synopsis of this during our, during the county's presentation. It states, "In June of 2024, the county sent an initial letter saying it was going to start appraising different properties, and then it, it's radio silent for anything else that happened. But after that, Park Ranch moved the court for a preliminary injunction because it was going to take additional property that was not contemplated as part of the development agreement, and it was not necessary for federal funding requirements." It also states here that it's sent its March 20th offer, and quote, "As of April 2nd, 2025, Park Ranch has not specifically responded to the confidential offer." Mr. Ritchie indicated that it was through court filings, but this was, letter was sent on March 28th, and indeed, the county cited it last Monday on page 4 in its filing and included it as Exhibit D. On page 1023, it says that staff is recommending that this board move forward with eminent domain proceedings to acquire necessary real property. We dispute that this is necessary, as required under NRS Chapter 37. For eminent domain takings, there must be an actual finding that these takings are, quote, "necessary for public use." Park Ranch has asked for leave to amend its complaint so it can add this claim for inverse condemnation. These takings are unlawful because they are not necessary. They're not necessary because they are due to the county's plans and refusal to fix the issues. At 1023, it says that Park Ranch, at times, has been cooperative and at other times, has been uncooperative, but this commentary is wholly without context. Park Ranch deeded a lot of land to the county. It is the county's flawed construction plans here that makes Park Ranch reject the county's offer. Additional land is not necessary to build Mueller Parkway in compliance with the development agreement. The county should instead fix its construction plans to eliminate unlawful encroachments on Park Ranch property and work within the 205-foot right-of-way that Park Ranch already gave the county. Park Ranch has not received what it bargained for. It deeded the county 76 acres of valuable land for free in exchange for Mueller Parkway to be built in 2025 and to include drainage that would benefit the entire region. When the county says Park Ranch is unresponsive, what they mean is Park Ranch is defending its rights and attempting to hold the county accountable for what it promised to the public and to Park Ranch in 2019. Exhibit B is Mr. Johnson's appraisal package. Mr. Johnson did not determine which land needed to be acquired. The county told him what properties and their boundaries were above that one-foot increase in base flood elevation. Notably, the county's plans have kept changing. So, Mr. Johnson's areas that he kept appraising also changed. You can see this by comparing page 1198 of the packet with Pages 1118 and 1153, as well as 1316. There's no assurances that these are the final plans, and therefore, only this land will be flooded. And by flooded, I only mean that one-foot rise. We can talk about the flooding that would be, you know, 6 inches to 12 inches. But I note further that FEMA has still not approved the county's flood plans. I also note that Mr. Johnson's appraisal does not discuss how Park Ranch's project will be impacted by the redirection. So, that Exhibit, in Exhibit E in 1271, I'll talk about that in just a moment, how the culvert will change the flows. I've kind of alluded to it below, but how it'll affect the other neighborhoods. Exhibit D, as I mentioned, that's the 2019 development agreement. It's missing the ordinance, which, in its summary, not only does it mention it includes the flood conveyance channel, but it also states that it will be a critical emergency access for first responders. And the purpose of the agreement itself was to, as it says, "Potential to remove much of Minden and Gardnerville from the floodplain for those areas affected by the Pineut and Buckeye Washes drainages." And as I mentioned, Exhibit G, which you cannot read, it describes the 100-foot drainage and multimodal path along the north and east sides of Mueller Parkway. I've looked at this many times. I've looked at the ordinance many times, and I cannot find anywhere in here where it says that, it says it's at the county's option. Park Ranch deeded the extra right-of-way for this purpose. Indeed, if the county does not opt to do a drainage channel, what is it planning for that 100 feet? Should that extra 100 feet rightfully revert back to Park Ranch? So, couple of notes based on the presentation by staff today. There's a mention about their obligations from Mr. Haynes. He says that it's, while six ones, their only obligation is just to build two lanes of a road and maybe add drainage later. It's also interesting that Exhibit E, which has some of their plans, their two-lane road proposing has no curb, no gutter, no shoulder, which is against county design. So, where's the water gonna go when they build that? There was a mention about the delays that are needed in their quest for an extension in this case, blaming FEMA. To be clear, this development agreement has been in place since 2019. The county has known its obligations since that time. The county didn't apply to FEMA and have plans for such a long time, and FEMA has rejected all of them and keeps sending them back because they're inaccurate. Either it's too small of a scope, or they have different inputs and different outputs. So, so for the county to blame FEMA is inaccurate, and in, in doing so, the county is saying it's enacting the Acts of God provision, that this is the reason why it must have an extension. Turning, setting aside the incomplete materials and turning to the, there's inaccuracies with the proposed resolution. There are multiple issues, but just a few to highlight. On page 2, it says that the resolution references to the development agreement's requirement, "The parties must negotiate in good faith for the purchase of additional right-of-way if necessitated by the design of Mueller Parkway." 5.1 does not say that. I've already gone into that with the development agreement. It's only for federal funding requirements not present here. And for the resolution to say Park Ranch violated the terms of the development agreement by refusing the county's offer, declining to sell any additional right-of-way or easements to the county, even when such easements were already authorized by the development agreement, is misleading. These easements are not authorized by the development agreement. They were not necessitated by federal funding requirements. On page 3, and a little bit alluded to during the presentation today, it said that the county considered reports and recommendations from the county's engineers, C.A. Group and J.E. Fuller. Those reports and recommendations are not in the agenda packet or materials. It states, "They examined the various possible methods of constructing Mueller Parkway without additional land and easements." What were they? Where are those considerations for the board to review? Says, "The additional land and easements are necessary to construct Mueller Parkway in a manner which is compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury." What were the considerations? How is taking property here for the greater good when it is flooding multiple properties owned not just by Park Ranch? This brings up that just compensation issue mentioned a second ago. So, just compensation, defined in Chapter 37 as putting the property owner back in the same financial position as if the property had never been taken. But here, the appraisal is just for those areas of adverse impact over one foot. It doesn't account for the areas that are gonna be flooded less than one foot. It doesn't account for the fact that that flooding is going to occur in Neighborhood 4, Neighborhood 5, and will greatly increase the cost for development that was planned. That is not putting Park Ranch back in the same position. Staff stated that this item was for a, quote, "legitimate public purpose." So, this means this board must find that the county's current plans, pardon me, will include abandonment of its promises is legitimate and essentially the only way to proceed. It wa, it was interesting to see that there was only four options listed as the only, your only choices. We don't think that's the case. Park Ranch has been willing to negotiate all along, say, "How can we make this work?" What's, what is interesting is when it was discovered that the 100-foot drainage canal would not hold the water that it was originally contemplated and what's all things, Park Ranch didn't learn that. The county didn't come to Park Ranch and say, "We've discovered something. We thought this could work. It's not gonna hold enough water. What else could we do?" It was all done in secret, and only into, after years, when Park said, "Can we get the plans? Can we get the plans?", did then that Park Ranch learn that there was no drainage channel and know that there was nothing happening. So, the communication might, there was definitely a breakdown, but it wasn't including Park Ranch. So, in summary, we'd urge the board to reject the proposed resolution or bare minimum, postpone any action on this item, while investigates the history of the development agreement and the corresponding ordinance, including the county's promises regarding drainage infrastructure and removing properties from the floodplain, the purpose of Park Ranch deeding 205 feet of right-of-way to the county, including the 100-foot for a drainage channel, why the county is not proceeding with any sort of drainage channel, and whether that extra land then should be deeded, that was deeded for this purpose, should rightfully revert back to Park Ranch, how the county is now planning to redirect waters with their current flow patterns, and consideration for all of the homes and properties that will be impacted with new flooding by the county's redirection, what other alternatives the county considered that would fit within the 76-plus acres that Park Ranch deeded to the county, and why the county cannot design plans to work within the right-of-way, why the county's plans do not have curb and gutters or shoulders that meet county standards. Where is that water going to go? Whether adoption of such a resolution sets a dangerous precedent for the government to merely take any property when the county decides to change and redirect how waters flow? Whether the county's citation to Section 5.1 of the development agreement includes the takings of land? It does not. And thus, whether the county should boldly be claiming Park Ranch violated the development agreement by refusing to sell land? And whether the county's proposed takings are actually And whether the county's proposed takings are actually necessary as required under NRS Chapter 37, especially given the county's promises to Park Ranch in 2019? This time, we can entertain questions for either myself or Mr. Park.
Did you, you wanted to go?
No.
Okay, so I looked at Commissioner Rice the same time you mentioned it, because this is a question he had. You mentioned that the county has only looked at the four options and that there's other options that can solve these prompts. I guess first I want to ask you, is it your opinion the county has an obligation to handle the drainage problems that are going to result from Mueller Parkway?
Absolutely, as promised in the ordinance.
Perfect. Okay. So then what is Mr. Park holding's solution to it?
So here's the conundrum that Park was in. Park didn't have the plans, asked forever, finally gets the plans, and now has to reverse and recoil and try to do its own plans. So at this moment, I'll turn it over to Park, who has a little bit more information than I do. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine.
So what plans that we would do?
Okay. Good afternoon. Well, if I may, before answering that question, if I could give you guys a little bit of history of where we were 20 years ago. Park was actually a park entity named, I think it was Park Cattle at the time, entered into a Development Agreement with Douglas County around 2004 and 2005, somewhere in there. And it terminated and expired in roughly around 2012, and there was no road built. So the county came back to me, and it was actually an ex-commissioner that approached me. And he, when he came to me, he explained that, you know, Buckeye Road is infill, is a good place for future development, and you have this receiving area out at Topaz. We can move it to Minden. It all makes sense. And by the way, we need to address regional drainage. So I listened to that commissioner and thought about it and thought it was actually a pretty decent idea, because not only would we address that regional drainage issue, it would help protect our land, but the rest of the community. So at that point, Tom Delaire and I started negotiating on and have talks about, in meetings, about how this would come about. And what their request was, and they wanted 205 feet. I said, "Tom, okay, well, why do you need the 205 feet? Well, we need to put in this 100-foot drainage. We need an easement for a 100-foot drainage so we can intercept Pineut Creek floodwaters and Buckeye Creek floodwaters." Okay, sounds reasonable. And it's interesting today that, why he's sitting in the back, and that's the person I was negotiating with, and these people weren't even there. It was the ex-commissioner and Tom Delaire. And I find it very interesting why he's sitting in the back and not up here. Regardless, where was I going with this? I bought into it. I thought it was a reasonable idea. Perfect. Come to find out, for whatever reason, the drainage channel doesn't work. It doesn't have near the capacity to carry the water. And like Nicole alluded to, is that I would have appreciated it more if the county staff would have just come to me and said, "You know what, David? We've got a problem. This doesn't work. We've got to go to Plan B." Uh-uh, that's not the way it went down. They hid the whole thing. So they're scrambling in the meantime to try to figure out where to put this water. They don't know what to do. They get J.E. Fuller come up with this modeling that pushes all this water out to the north of Mueller Parkway, flooding out not only Park property, but Mr. Pagan's property and Bentley's property. I think it's important to go back to those flood maps that, unfortunately, this is all we got to show you here, and then, you know, eight and a half by elevens, but the existing floodplain shows our Neighborhood One being flooded. And then it goes right through into Mr. Pagan's property. And there's a small portion to the north side of what would be Mueller Parkway, but they are correct. Mueller Parkway acts as a levy, now it's going to push more water there. But guess what? Our Neighborhood One is still in the floodplain. Mr. Pagan is still in the floodplain. Actually, they just made the problem worse. They have added additional property to the floodplain.
I want to interrupt you, and I apologize, and I don't know if this is the right way to do it, but I'm going to forget all these questions if I don't do it. That's not what we're sort of hearing. From what I understand, this proposal takes all but a small portion of Mr. Pagan's property out of the floodplain. It doesn't put any new water in the floodplain. Hold on. And with that small portion, he already has a, he has a pond, right? That's going to collect the additional water, but it's going to get him out of the floodplain and allow him to start his construction, which is necessary to build Mueller Parkway. I mean, he's paying for four roads himself, and if he doesn't do that part, then there's no sense in having Mueller Parkway, is there? So we're being told, and I'm misunderstanding this, and tell me if I'm wrong, staff, but that this proposal with the levy and moving the water overtakes Pagan out of it. It also, my understanding is, it moves it away, a lot of it, away from your Development One, and there's just a little bit left over now, but it substantially improves Development One. I didn't know anything about Development Four or Five, but is that accurate? And that's not sort of what Mr. Park is saying right now.
Jeremy Hutchings for the record. So the Mueller Parkway acts as a levy, I think we agree with that. Mueller Parkway acts as a levy and pushes the water north, I think we agree with that. Does it completely remove Neighborhood One and Mr. Pagan's property out of the floodplain? No, it doesn't. It drastically reduces it. If you remember, some of the easements we're asking for...
Through this, and you don't have to go through, waste everybody's time on this.
But I just wanted to explain to you that those irrigation culverts, Mr. Tarkanian, do allow water coming back the other way in large event, so it doesn't completely remove it.
No, it doesn't completely, but from what Mr. Park is saying, if I'm understanding you correctly, is by diverting the water, it increases the water flow on Mr. Pagan's property, and it doesn't solve the water flow on his Development One, and actually increases Development Four and Five. Does this levy improve the elimination of the water flow on his Development One? And does it improve Pagan? That's not 100%. We went through that before, but is it an improvement or is it making it worse? Isn't that what you said, Mr. Park, that's making it worse?
Well, let me clarify that it does improve Neighborhood One, and it does improve Mr. Pagan's property, but there's still floodplain there regardless. What I meant, I guess I should have clarified and said, it increases the floodplain to the north of Mueller Parkway on Park property and on Bentley property, which wasn't there before. Okay. So...
Nobody talked to you.
What?
That's where you were.
No, nobody had talked to me, yeah. So nobody came to me and said, you know, "We got this issue. We made a mistake," or whatever it was, and it was just a big secret, and they weren't telling me what was going on. On and on and on through this process, we were having meetings, and at one point, I was having weekly meetings with Mr. Hutchings. And I can recall particularly one time when we were in the meeting, and I think I was standing at the whiteboard, and he was standing at the whiteboard, and we were drawing something out. I was, "Why are the encroachment on the road into the additional park land?" And he looks at me, and he just shrugged his shoulders, and went, "He didn't know. He didn't know why." And I actually believe him. I don't think he knew why. He would just get in plans that were encroaching upon Park property. Regardless, I did not agree to do that. I did agree for them to extend their culverts outside of the right-of-way for the purposes of them to convey stormwater. However, if you look at this plan set that was sent to the contractor that's doing the work on the job, you'll notice right there at the roundabout at Buckeye Road, there's a three-by-six box culvert. There's not one there today, but they designed one, and guess what it does? Conveys Buckeye floodwaters right through our projects, Neighborhoods Two, Three, and potentially Four. And that was what Nicole was referring to before. So it's a bait and switch here. We remove a little bit here, but we just put it over there and put it over there. And in reality, you've got to deal with the water. I also found it interesting, well, let me back up. So part of that is putting the water in what we refer to as our 277 acres. And the reason we're here today is it's all about this eminent domain proceedings that the county wants to move forward with. I can recall going into a meeting, probably about a year and a half ago, thereabouts, it was in the fall, I think, and I was meeting with Jeremy, I think AJ was there, I think Tom was there, and Jennifer popped in and said, "Hey, I saw you guys having a meeting. I want to talk to you real quick." "Okay, what do you got? I want to buy your 277 acres." I go, "Really?" I didn't give her an answer, yes or no. Let me get this straight. They wanted to buy it from me? Now they want to take it from me?
Do you have current plans?
What?
Commissioner's question is, do you have current plans?
Okay, right. So I guess, moving forward, I think there is a resolution here. I've offered solutions to the county staff, and they won't take me up on it.
For our benefit, why don't you tell us what those offers are and what your solutions are?
Sure, okay. So there's two areas of regional floodwaters. We've got the Pineut drainage and the Buckeye drainage. So on, I'm negotiating against myself here, but I'll just come out and say it. I'm willing to take the floodwaters on the Pineut drainage. I'll build the infrastructure. We'll put in a drainage district, and the homeowners will end up having to pay for it. It's going to hurt me at the end of the day financially, but I'm willing to do that. However, on the Buckeye side, let's do it and do it right. We need to get that water around the corner. I'm willing to provide a temporary drainage easement until upstream drainage detention.
Where would that temporary drainage easement be?
That would be on our 277 acres.
Where we're talking about putting it now?
Yes, yeah. And then, of course, we cannot forget the fact that Bentley plays a major role in this too, because that will, floodwaters go right through them too. And I know they've been talking to the county about some kind of resolution, but that's none of my business. But if they were on board, we'd be willing to do that. And when I say detention upstream, it's a detention that's owned by the Douglas County Lake Tahoe Sewer Authority. And that's the most rationale thing to do, and it's the right thing to do. And I know it wasn't a good...
So you're willing to pay for that?
I'm willing to excavate that material and create that detention over time, yes.
Okay. And what other options are there besides that?
Quite frankly, you can piecemeal a few things here or there.
I don't know about the rest of the board, but to me, this is a whole important thing, and it's what I asked Mr. Haynes, why I asked, was to ask your very nice presentation attorney, is we have a drainage issue from this development that needs to be resolved. What are our solutions? We discussed before the gravel pit or the pit up there. We discussed the county's options here. Are there any other options that we have, or just those two?
I'm aware that the county has attempted to get some drainage at the Grandview Development, and I believe that didn't work out.
That's not an option. We took it out of the stormwater plan just recently. So you know that. What other options do we have besides those? What other option would satisfy you besides the sewer district's pit?
Honestly, I don't know any other options. It's similar to what Jeremy's trying to do on the Pineut. He's trying to create detention on there. That's the upstream drainage detention. And you asked me what else, and what's important is, I think, that we go back to the Development Agreement and build and design the road per the Development Agreement as we agreed upon. And if we have solutions other than the drainage channel that was potentially in that 100-foot easement, then we might not need that anymore, agreed. But particularly, we still might need it over in Ashland to get that water around the corner, because right now, I've looked at the plans, Ashland design for Mueller Parkway, the road, it overtops. It's not going to be an emergency access road. It's not good, in my opinion. But if you built it correctly, put in some kind of facility and levy, in addition to some kind of channel to convey all that water, I'm willing to take it all. We may have to do that over on Buckeye too, to get it around the corner, so that it doesn't go through our Neighborhood One and through Mr. Pagan's property as well. So...
I'd interrupt you again, but I think we're only here with respect to the Buckeye property, so I don't want to get into the Ashland. And I didn't quite understand what your solution was there, because that's what we're trying to get across, is to eliminate the water through your Development One. It also eliminates it through our county building and the development to the west of that, but also Pagan's property. What is the solution besides what we proposed and the sewer pit?
You go ahead. Okay. If you take Neighborhood One out of the floodplain, you take Mr. Pagan out of the floodplain as well.
How do you propose to do it?
You go up to Mueller Parkway and acts as a levy, and you install a channel along with it to get the capacity of that water to go around the corner in its entirety, not just a partial amount of water. I'm sorry, what?
You can't eliminate the 100-year water because it's too large with the drainage ditch, if I'm understanding that correctly. If I'm saying something wrong, please let me know, because this is my understanding from what you said.
Well, I believe there's a way to get it done in its entirety, 100% around the corner. I don't know if staff agrees with me, but I think there's a way to do it.
I guess. Are we done with your presentation? I mean, I guess you have questions for Commissioner, Mr. Park?
I would like to add that, thank you, Commissioner Nicole Scott again. I'd like to add, what you're seeing here is Mr. Park and Park Ranch has been offering more than I would have advised, but offering and is generous and wants to work with the county here. And so we would ask the board to not take any action on this right now as proposed.
My question would be, will Mr. Park accept our offer of buying the easements that we need for Mueller Parkway at this time as we work through the options or the need to move floodwaters in other locations?
So to clarify, thank you, Nicole Scott again. To clarify your question, are you saying the easements that are part of the appraisal that has been proposed, or just the temporary easements?
The easements that we proposed of $186,900. Okay.
I have a question.
Commissioner Hales.
Yes. My question for Mr. Park or Ms. Scott, it's kind of a, takes a minute to explain. From the appraisal on page six, it says the property owner was contacted, and it says, "Mr. Park has expressed, quote, 'The county's proposed right-of-way acquisitions will result in significant impacts to the cost of developing Buckeye Farms by increasing the locations and amount of fill material and decreasing the number of residential lots available for sale,' and end of quote. The undersigned has requested further support and specificity from Mr. Park to better understand his concerns related to his opined adverse impacts of the proposed acquisitions. Mr. Park has declined to provide additional information to the undersigned, meaning the appraiser, and/or been non-responsive to requests for additional information.'" And then on page 50 of the appraisal, it says, "Consideration has been given to any potential adverse effects to the whole Buckeye Farm specific plan. The areas required are very small and adjacent to Mueller Parkway. Based on review, the proposed right-of-way acquisitions will not..." Based on review, the proposed right-of-way acquisitions will not materially, materially impact on the existing approvals or cost or ability to develop the Buckeye Farm specific plan." So, I, it seems to me like this appraiser did not find additional impacts, although in your presentation you have claimed those. How would you, how would you address the contradiction there? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hales. Nicole Scott again. I had the opportunity to depose Mr. Johnson on Monday and ask those very questions, and he said he did not take into consideration, there was zero damages consideration for the effects on the rest of Buckeye Farms, because while Mr. Park provided a broad indication of how costs would increase because there would be increased flooding, Park Ranch is always going to be behind the ball because we're getting information from the county, and for the Park Ranch to then turn around and determine how much this is going to increase his costs as he goes on to build is not an instantaneous answer. These costs are still being developed. So that is why I alluded to earlier when I was talking about just compensation, how this does not put the property owner back in the same financial position, because those costs are still being determined as we figure out what's going to happen with the county's plans.
But this appraiser said he didn't see there would be, there, he took that under consideration and didn't see any. That's what I don't understand.
One thing.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Briefly, and then I'll let Mr. Park speak, but Nicole Scott again. Again, with the opportunity of having deposed Mr. Johnson, asking him directly, he said that he did not see anything because there was no tangible cost provided to him, and we can't, we haven't even gotten to that point yet. So, that was the answer based on a deposition that I am representing happened on Monday, and I'll let Mr. Park continue.
Yeah, if my, if I may, um, lately, I've been, I've heard that I was irresponsive to Mr. Johnson, and that's not true at all. I met with him twice, talked to him on the phone twice. In fact, those two times in person that we talked about, that I talked to him in person, uh, we talked about, um, the significance of, by example, that three-by-six culvert that I told you at the roundabout, and in itself, extending outside the right-of-way, it's not really that big of a deal, I understand that. If the significance is the water that's going to go through it, right? So you got hundreds and hundreds of CFS going through there out towards our neighborhoods two, three, and four. He completely understood. I understand your concern. However, through the deposition that Nicole took the other day that I was present at, he was told by Jeremy Hutchins, "You only appraise this. Don't even look at anything else." In fact, there's a red line appraisal that he redlined, Mr. Johnson's appraisal, making changes. So, I did talk to him, and, um, Commissioner Hales, hopefully that's an answer for you, but, um, that's why the appraisal doesn't show any adverse effect, effects on the rest of the property.
To be clear, he does acknowledge in his appraisal that you spoke with him twice, but still, those, uh, pieces that I read are accurate, um, in addition to having spoken with you twice.
Well, right, so I think he testified in, in his deposition the other day that he talked, talked to me multiple times in person and on the phone.
Are there additional questions by Commissioner?
Yes. Mr. Parks, Mr. Park, sorry, Parks or the other ones. I, I still haven't heard an answer to my, one of my three questions, and that is, what will it take to get you and the county on the same page? I hate kicking cans down the road, number one. I hate the thought of eminent domain, number two. And it seems to me that this has gone on and on and on. I guarantee you, the county is going to be building Mueller Parkway, and they're going to, there's shovels in the dirt already, and it, it will be built, but I would prefer that it be built so that everybody's happy. What is it going to take to get you and the county on the same page?
I, I guess it's a matter of who we're negotiating with and, and working with. Um, I know we had a mediation approximately a year ago, and we didn't come to any resolution there that day, and I believe the participants were...
Negotiate with us and tell us what it is that would make you happy. Am I jumping in and...
No, please.
Yeah, I'd be happy to negotiate with a couple of commissioners, um, and, yeah, but...
Exactly what would make you happy here?
Can I jump in real quick? Just to clarify, this agenda item has been agendized to discuss the construction of Mueller Parkway and eminent domain, which means, is it for public use? And specifically, NRS 37.010 lists the public uses that are allowed. To the extent that the board and Mr. Park would like to discuss, um, other ways to achieve the public use, I think that falls within the agendized topic. But again, to clarify, this agenda is to talk about eminent domain for Mueller Parkway's construction.
It's exactly where we're asking though, instead of eminent domain, we, we have a water issue, a drainage issue. I don't want to take, I thought your question was great, I don't mean it to, I just want to get Mr. Park to tell us what would you like, instead of eminent domain, to solve this drainage issue? What do you, what do you want? Is that right? Go, go ahead.
That's, that's my question. What, what will it take? What do you want? How can we get on the same page? The, the county, trust me, is going to build Mueller Parkway, one way or another. It, it won't happen in my lifetime, but at least this section is going to get built. So, where, where do we go from here?
Well, I, I believe I explained my solutions, and I'm willing to take Pine Nut water, uh, we need upstream detention up at the, um, Douglas County Lake Tahoe Sewer Authority. Um, I'm willing to take, put a temporary flood easement on our 277 acres, acknowledging that we have to get Bentley to, to work with this as well. So, I mean, that's a high-level solution, and if you want to get into more details, I can at some point, but that's the solution.
Vice Chairman, may I, may I jump in?
Please.
What I heard, Mr. Park, is that you want to own and operate a gravel pit on the Incline Village Sewer District property in exchange for, uh, allowing water on your property. Is that a fair summary?
Um, a couple minor corrections. Um, it's a flood detention, and it's Douglas County Lake Tahoe Sewer Authority, not Incline.
Sorry, yes.
I think Mr. Park is saying that he's trying to come up with solutions here that won't flood. Thank you, Nicole Scott again. I think Mr. Park is saying he's trying to come up with solutions that will not flood the property that, that was part of the original 2019 development, what he, what he and the county, as he alluded to earlier, agreed to.
Okay, do we...
Yeah, I think, I, I kind of had, you know, the statement going kind of towards the end, but I feel like it's more appropriate now. Um, and I've been massaging what I wanted to say this...
We still have public comment to go?
Yeah, that's fine. I'm not going to cross any lines here. Um, so, I recognize that I'm still the new guy here, um, but I understand the role we play as this board. One thing is that the county staff works very hard, and they serve to protect their employer, the county. So, their perspective, as any good employee would be, is to do what they feel is absolutely best for the county. And honestly, I believe that our, our local county staff excels at their job. Now, we as commissioners, our role is very, is different and distinct, because we answer directly to the public, and we serve as a crucial check and balance between the will of the people and the operation of the county itself. So now we find ourselves at a standstill between the county and a rancher developer, with both polar parties holding perspectives that each believe, um, they have acted appropriately on behalf of those they represent. And in that point, neither one of us are wrong. I don't believe anybody is wrong in their perspective and how they feel they've moved forward, depending on how you look at it. Regrettably, this has become deeply personal for many of us involved, um, and I, as I often say, everyone's entitled to their, their feelings. And I can see people getting tense, taking a moment, catching their breath, and that is highly respectable so that we can get, get to where we want to be. And that being said, we all ultimately share this same goal. We just differ, differ on how to achieve it at this moment. If it were up to me, I'd make a motion that we pause for a moment and take a step back, but that's not where we're at at the moment. Um, I believe we could have two commissioners, the county engineer, district attorney, Mr. Park and his representatives, sit down together and address all of these issues, and come out with something, um, that, that, you know, but we, in order to do that, we'd have to recognize our perspectives, and we'd have to set aside our egos, we'd have to release any lingering feelings of betrayal, and basically let bygones be bygones, and only then could we come together like we're asking for and, uh, find a resolution to build this road. Because quite frankly, we're Douglas County, and we're better than this. I just, it's killing me. So, um, and I understand that what I'm asking wouldn't be easy for anybody, either side, the county representatives or Mr. Park and his family and his representatives. But if we agree to initiating this fresh, transparent discussions where honesty prevails, I truly believe we can resolve this issue and create something that the public would generally value without having to complete the eminent domain. That was what I wanted to get out there. So, go with that where you would, and open the public comment whenever you do it, but I know, I feel it in my heart that we could get through all this, and if we just reset and let's all move forward knowing we have the same goal, and how do we find solutions instead of roadblocks?
So, I, I do have comments, but I'll, I'll, I'll make them after public comment. So, if there's no further questions of Mr. Park or staff, then we'll go to, we'll, we'll take a five-minute break.
Do you want to clarify?
Are you, you're done with your presentation, I take it?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh, so, well, at this time, then, we're going to take a five-minute break, uh, and then we'll come back and take public comment, and then after public comment, we'll bring it back to the board, and we'll discuss where we're going to go with this. Okay? So, thank you. We're in recess for five minutes. We're in recess for five minutes. Okay, we're going to call this back into session. Commissioner Hales is back with us also, so. Okay, so we've heard from staff, we've heard from Mr. Park and his attorney, Ms. Scott, and we've asked our questions. So, at this time, we'll go to public comment, after which we will, I want to remind the public that they're allowed three minutes. The timing clock will be on when you, after you repeat, after you state your name. So, state your name and then sign in and we'll start your public comment time. So.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the Board, Mimi Moss. Today, I'm speaking as a former community development director and floodplain administrator for Douglas County. You're probably saying, "Well, .7 acres means nothing to one of the largest landowners in Douglas County." Staff states one of the reasons for eminent domain is that the area is needed because of the adverse impact created on adjacent park property from flood flows. Instead of the county mitigating the adverse impacts caused by the construction of Mueller, staff wants you to acquire the land or use of the land through easements because the code states that an adverse impact wouldn't apply if you were impacting your own land. Don't be fooled. Staff's actions circumvent the flood ordinance. The 100-year storm flows need to be mitigated by the county via a new drainage channel because the county is building the road. Did you know that the drainage report submitted to FEMA for the Klaumar relies on the construction of the flood channel in the northeast area to make their determination of no adverse impact? Klaumar hasn't been approved yet. Did you know that the construction contract for Mueller, and I may be incorrect here after talking to the DA's office, did you know that the construction contract for Mueller approved last year does not meet the two-lane urban arterial design standard per the development agreement and per Table 6.2 dealing with the 25-year design storm? The road would essentially be at grade, no curb and gutter because overtopping would be allowed, there'd be, there's no bike lane, and there's no 12-foot dry lane. Did you also know that you would be allowing an interim road design, a rural road section like Centerville? And then, per the technical drainage report, at some point, the road would be elevated and a storm-flood channel constructed? Does this make sense in the drainage channel? Do you also know that the contract plans currently out to bid for the section of Mueller Parkway along Ashland Park identifies the same flawed design? Since 2019, I'm not aware of any action by the Board allowing a substandard design. Only the Board has this authority, not staff at any level. The county requires a developer to follow the adopted design standards, so how can the county tell the public that the adopted codes don't apply to the county? If Park were to construct the roadway today, would the county allow him to construct a substandard road? I point these items out because I believe a number of poor decisions by staff have put yourselves in an untenable position. I understand you want to leave a legacy. You want to be the first Board to fund and hopefully construct a section of Mueller. I get that. But do you want your legacy to become a complete joke when in five to 10 years, you have to rebuild because the integrity of the roadway at grade was undermined by storm and floodwater? You and staff represented the community that a drainage channel would be constructed along Mueller to alleviate storm and some flood flows into parts of Garnaville. Do you now tell them that you don't stand by your word? If you don't construct the roadway the correct way now, you will never get a second chance. Please take no action today, meet with staff and the owner, and figure out how to proceed while meeting the laws and the agreements you're required to follow. The taxpayers deserve no less. Thank you.
John Martin for the record. The county promised the public a drainage ditch would be built with Mueller Parkway. Now, they're refusing to build the ditch, which will result in dumping floodwater into the valley instead of the river. Why would anyone enter into an agreement with the county if they have proven today that they don't follow through by doing what they promised? And when they don't get their way, they will forcibly take your property. What is the county, what the county is doing is unfair. Why would the county allow the Mueller right-of-way to overlap with the Virginia ditch? The county should fix their flawed design plans, address the, and address the drainage so they don't have to forcibly take more land from Park Ranch. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment?
Pan's out. Sorry. Maureen Casey, speaking as the Chair of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is the keeper of the master plan. And back in 2020, we took all the plans from the transportation plan all the way through the vision plans and the statements from the towns and the GIDs and incorporated them into the 2020 master plan. We incorporated the goals and the achievements from the previous master plans, and we incorporated policies. Took a lot of time, took the advisement from staff and the district attorney's office, and put together a document that we're very proud of. We use that document every time a project comes before us. And work very, very hard to ensure that we dot the i's and cross the t's. But it's incomplete in that we don't have an excellent circulation plan. One of those parts that's missing is Mueller Parkway. You all know about the circulation problems in the Garnaville ranches. And that was a very large area, the county, that was not put together with a large arterial running from Highway 88 to Highway 395. Mueller is one of those pieces that will put 395 through to 395, bypassing downtown and allow development to occur. We have the Buckeye Farms, we have Ashland Park, we have Chichester. All that residential property that right now is going to feed on to 395 if we do not have Mueller Parkway in. Whatever the Board needs to do to allow that circulation to be completed is going to make the Planning Commission's job easier. We do not get into politics, we do not dive into policy. That's up to you. But whatever you do to ensure that Douglas County has good transportation circulation is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Additional public comment?
Jim Slade, speaking as Chairman of the Sustainable Growth Committee. The initial purpose for building Mueller Parkway was first sold to the residents of Douglas County as a bypass to reduce ever-increasing traffic congestion on Highway 395 through the towns of Mindon and Garnaville. It was never going to do that. Mueller Parkway is being built to facilitate growth, unwanted and unwelcome growth, growth that will never pay for itself and will make the traffic through our towns much worse, not better. Growth that will continue to threaten our most valuable resource, our groundwater. There was already substantial residential growth, including Virginia Ranch, approved along the proposed path of Mueller Parkway 20 years or so ago, when the road was first approved. That growth alone would have significantly worsened traffic on 395 and further impacted our aquifer. About seven years ago, however, our county commissioners made their worst and least popular decision in this century in approving a master plan amendment for the legally dubious transfer of receiving area from the Topaz area to the heart of the Carson Valley on land owned by Park Ranch. Commissioners Rice Pendleton Walsh voted for approval even though public written and oral comments were running 50 to 100 to 1 against it. So, now we have the prospect of another 2,200 homes that will at some point add to the traffic congestion and the threats to our groundwater. That decision likely resulted in a windfall to Pike Park Ranch of several tens of millions of dollars. But since then, there have been multiple lawsuits and disagreements. This road is supposed to be completed by the end of this year, but Park Ranch seems determined to put up additional roadblocks, perhaps just to run out the clock. The county is ready to proceed, but challenges keep preventing that from happening. At this point, it is clearly in the public interest, both financially and infrastructure-related, to complete the section of Mueller Parkway this year. The resolution only authorizes eminent domain proceedings, it doesn't mandate them. This would hopefully just be a tool to encourage the parties to come sign some kind of consensus to allow the county to complete the section of the Mueller Parkway in a timely manner. This resolution, however, would allow the county to use eminent domain as the last resort, if necessary, to complete their required section of the road in time. The question shouldn't be, "What would make Mr. Park happy?" It's, "What compromise can Park and the county come to that is in the best interest of the county residents as a whole?" I believe that it is in the public interest of the vast majority of residents of Douglas County to improve this resolution today, and I urge you to do so. And hopefully, the parties can come together and make a resolution to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leslie Lawson. Although I've only known David Park and his family for a few years, I honestly don't know anybody who's more caring and concerned about the proper development and growth of our valley. David Park is not the bad guy. I hope the county and David Park can come to a solution together, which will mutually build Mueller Parkway the right way, but not exercising eminent domain. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional public comment? Since I know additional public comment, I will close public comment and bring it back to the Board for further discussion and possible motion. Ms. Hales, did you want to weigh in yet, or?
Sure. First, just a couple of quick responses or thoughts. You know, this is, this is not a taking, this is a purchase. And that is, eminent domain is not a taking, it's a purchase. I just wanted to note that because some public comment referred to it as a taking. Regarding the standard of the road, that is not a topic of discussion today. But at some future point, I would like county staff to address the standard of the road and why curb and gutter are not being planned with this section of the road. Because I agree with Ms. Moss that we don't want to leave a legacy of a substandard road. I also agree with Commissioner Tolbert's optimism that perhaps a mutually acceptable agreement can be reached. I hope that is the case, and I will work very hard for that to be the case. I do not believe such a agreement can be based on allowing a gravel pit. I hope that Mr. Park will find another solution that could be mutually agreeable. I would much prefer an agreement that everyone can live with as opposed to eminent domain. However, I am not going to vote in favor of pausing this process because we have an obligation to residents in the county to move forward with Mueller. And I'm not interested in delaying that. So, I will vote in favor of moving forward in this process. I will work very hard to find an alternative to ultimately using eminent domain. That's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Tolbert, you had?
Thank you. So, you know, as Ms. Moss mentioned, I, for one, do not want this Board's legacy to be defined as the one that built a road to nowhere and in so doing severed ties with a multi-generational ranch family that has given so much to this community. That said, I will support this motion as a matter of procedure with the understanding that it serves only as a fallback. The county and Park Ranch must commit in good faith to engaging in sincere discussions, ultimately reaching a mutually agreed-upon compromise to ensure the completion of this project for the benefit of the community. So, as long as we can agree that that's our goal, and it's very clear and understood that this is, in my opinion, simply a matter of procedure, not a statement of, "We're turning this to the courts." Just that that would be absolutely, as I've already said, the last resort.
Thank you. Commissioner Turk, can you?
I had some questions I'd like to get answered first before I can make a decision. Park Ranch's testimony was that they provided a 100-feet easement for a drainage ditch, and they even quoted, the attorney quoted a paragraph where it said that it was going to be built. I guess my question is, why wouldn't we build it if we, that was, if we requested the land and according to the attorney, it's in the agreement that it should be built? Why wouldn't we build it even if it doesn't solve the 100-year flood problem? Wouldn't it solve many of those years in between? And if we took the land from them already, why wouldn't we fulfill that obligation?
Mr. Vice Chair, if I may, Jennifer Davidson, County Manager, for the record. Certainly, that could be the direction of this Board. A policy decision from this Board could be to direct staff and to bring forward a design for the flood channel. for the flood channel. Included in the presentation that staff gave was a conceptual design that would accommodate what Mr. Delaire testified to at the time, not testified, said, stated during his staff presentation at the time the development agreement was approved. A channel that would convey somewhere between 300 to 400 CFS. Staff did not include that in the initial design today. One, because we were not required to do so within the six-year timeline, but additionally, we were reluctant to include the design because we felt our efforts, resources, and design energy should be focused on finding solutions upstream. And if we could invest time and energy upstream to whittle down, so to speak, the amount of the total volumes, when it came time to build some sort of flood conveyance adjacent to Mueller, we would have an idea of exactly how much floodwater we are dealing with and could design accordingly. If we build that flood channel today, it would accommodate the 300 to 400, and we might not be able to mitigate all the things upstream, and we might have to come back and redesign the channel, tweak it to fill in the gaps, so to speak. Do you have anything additionally you want to add to that, Mr. Hutchings?
Thank you, Mrs. Davidson. Yeah, the only other thing also when you start to look at it, the right-of-way we have from Park Ranch Holdings, I don't know if you have an exhibit that can show where the right-of-way kind of ties in past Hayborn, that does neck down, so you have, yeah, maybe, or?
Let me ask you something while you're looking for that. There's, Mr. Delaire had made a comment about how when the road is built with the levy and the current, God, I'm wondering the name, what's that? The ditch, I forget the name of it. The ditch when they're built, it's going to serve as sort of a waterway when that's built. Would this ditch that the county had promised to pay, had said they would pay when they took the land from Mr. Park be in addition to the sort of ditch that is going to be made from the levy on the road and the, what's the name of that ditch?
Virginia.
Virginia. Virginia Channel Ditch.
Or Ditch or Virginia?
Well, I'm trying to say, is it going to be two of them, or is it going to only be one? And if there's two of them, would that solve most of the water problem?
Mr. Vice Chairman, while Mr. Hutchings is looking for this, let me see if I can take a stab. So ultimately, the Virginia ditch, my understanding and conversations with Mr. Delaire and Mr. Hutchings, correct me if I'm wrong, could handle, was it 100 CFS?
Yeah, I think they irrigated right, and David's here, he might be able to speak directly to it, I thought was between like 100, 150 CFS, and it might have a little more capacity.
So we're getting more in the woods than I care about. I mean, we're not going to get to the 100-year.
No, I would say probably the combination of the channel and the ditch would be a ninth of what we needed to handle the total flows.
Yeah, no, I understand.
In my generous, in my estimates.
I don't mean to cut you off, I'm just trying to fast speed this so we're not wasting time going through this. This isn't a solution to the tire problems, and what you said about trying to mitigate the water flow up above is very important, it's accurate. But what I'm saying is if we promised, when we took, we had to make some kind of promise when you took 100 feet from Mr. Park, and it says in the agreement that it's going to be used for drainage ditch, when we made that promise, why wouldn't we build that and use what we got from the other demand-made ditch that we're going to have when we build the road and at least mitigate the water that's out there for the years where there isn't that much flooding? And if you're not going to do it, like you said, it's something we may do, and it's something the board may direct, seems to me like this was already in the agreement. Why did you take the land from him, saying you're going to build a ditch for it if you're not going to build it for sure? And if you're not going to build it for sure, then I certainly think you got to give it back to the Park Holdings. You can't just hold on to it. So I'm just trying to figure out why we're not going to build. I don't know what the cost is, I don't know what the budget, you have the budget in the county to do these type of things, but that's sort of something that I think hurts us when we listen to their testimony.
So Commissioner Turkanyan, you asked several questions during that stream, so I will attempt to answer them to the best of my ability. It is the county's stated intent, in the ordinance, and has always been our stated intent, to couple drainage improvements along Mueller with upstream improvements. There was no way we could have ever solved for all of the flooding, floodwater coming off of these washes by just installing some means of flood conveyance adjacent to Mueller. It continues to be our intent to solve for this floodwater. I think certainly we can explore a channel design today, but it's not going to accommodate all the floodwater, and the road itself will still continue to act like a levy for the difference, for the balance of the water, and some sort of easement will be needed because the water will still be routed around and pushed north. So it might be a smaller amount of land easement that is needed, but we are certainly not going to be able to mitigate all of this floodwater within the time period specified.
That wasn't my question, it was just whether this was going to be built, if this was the intent, and I can't seem to get a final answer saying, yes, it's going to be built, or if we don't get it built, we're going to give the land back. Okay, it's not, that's just one question. My other question, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Turkanyan, I do want to be specific because this question came up during my deposition. I was posed this question directly about whether or not we might deed this land, not deed, whatever it's called, transfer the land, any unused portion of the right-of-way back to Mr. Park. And my answer to that question was maybe. It's a policy decision for the county commission. This is a right-of-way that we have acquired. How we proceed and how we allocate the county's resources is the decision of this county commission.
You, this would be my last comment, and I'll go on to the next one, but we acquired it under the auspices, if I'm using the right word, that we are going to use it for a ditch. So it's not a policy decision for future board members to decide, a previous board member decided this, when they made that arrangement to have Park Holdings dedicate 100 square feet for this. The second thing they said that concerned me that I hadn't heard before was how this diversion of the water is going to affect his other developments, number four, number five. Is it going to have a increase in water flow in that part, those two parts of the developments that wouldn't be there if the water wasn't diverted?
I think so. All right, might, you know, to my knowledge, based on the latest report I get from J. Fuller, the appraisal is based on adverse impact, that was that increase in one foot. But I think sometimes maybe we could get another voice in the conversation, and maybe I can have the consultant come up and talk about impacts to the water. We have Chad in the audience, and he could come up and?
This vote today, if we authorize a potential to purchase this eminent domain, is this a final vote by the board, or is this going to come back to us for a final eminent domain vote?
Yeah, A.J. Haynes, for the record, this is the, this would be the action that authorizes the county to start the process. We would be following the board's approval, we would be filing a complaint for eminent domain, and that would kickstart the process. I suppose the board at any time, if the board wanted the county to change course, could put something back on the agenda and ask the county to change course.
The reason I ask that is, if it's going to affect his other property, that should be taken into consideration. One, it should be taken in consideration for the eminent domain and the impact, but I mean, that just isn't right for the county then to say, hey, we're going to divert the water and affect somebody else's development by it, and we're not, I'm not hearing yet if that is the case for sure, and if so, if it is the case, how badly? How do we make, how do I make a decision on this eminent domain if I don't have those facts in front of me? And see, this is a problem I have in this whole, I'm sorry, you going to say something? Okay. The problem I have in this thing is, there was way too many delays in this, you know, and because of so many delays, we're running in a timeframe of getting the road built, and I don't want to see that happen because then we lose the right to that land under the agreement. So we don't want that to happen, but at the same time, we should do what's right to the property owners that are going to be affected by this diversion of water, and if it's going to affect his property of other developments, that's a big issue, in my opinion. Can I ask Mr. Park a question? If we continue this to try to work out a solution, would you be willing to give the county additional time to build the road for the amount of time we are discussing a solution?
I would.
I would say, let's understand here that we're in this informal setting in a way that we're not committing to it here, but in this.
This isn't informal, we have to decide, no, no, I'm sorry to cut you off.
Understood.
I'm trying, I'm trying to decide, I'm not going to, I don't want to put the county in a position that we're going to not be able to fulfill obligations in December. I understand there's issues with the FEMA stuff and all that stuff, but we, the county seems to think they can get to where they need to get right now if we approve this. I don't want to delay this, and then all of a sudden, we can't complete the obligation. Would today on the record, would Park Holding agree to, given us whatever amount of time we've given you to work out an agreement with the county to get this done?
I think Park Ranch could entertain that. I just say this with a caveat because we have, there's a couple of unknowns here. We have the FEMA issue with not getting a CLOMAR. We still have plans that are still being developed, and they're still addressing the flooding that's going to happen on his other properties. So that's why it's hard to contain it all and say, what is all part of that?
I've been on the board for five years, and this is the hardest issue because I never get a straight answer. I don't, not when I'm, I don't mean you being dishonest or misleading, it's just there's never yes or no, this is what it's going to be like.
And I think Mr. Park would say yes, if I wasn't standing here.
Okay. Well, you charge him, you charge him a lot of money to stand there, so. I had one last question, and that goes with the CLOMAR. What happens with, if we don't move forward today with this eminent domain? Does this delay getting the CLOMAR done in June like we anticipated to be done? That was my question.
No.
We'll still get the CLOMAR.
I mean, it, well, for FEMA's purposes, FEMA's purposes, they look at the flood model and whether it's technically correct. Well, you go ahead then.
I'm sorry, Mr. Vice Chairman, I don't, and Commissioner Turkanyan, I am, you asked a yes or no question, and we're giving you a long answer again. It depends, and here's what it depends on. If the design of Mueller Parkway changes, then yes, the CLOMAR will be pushed out because we will have to resubmit.
It's going to push the water over, and right now, and that's what you submitted to the CLOMAR, that, if that changed. There's going to be a levy built, and it's going to push the water over to the north. That's what we have now in front of FEMA.
That's what we have now in front of FEMA, yeah.
Thank you.
And then you, what was, where do we stand with FEMA? You said we have a, like a soft yes, but we're not going to get the final letter. What, can you say that again?
I'll use a basketball analogy, the shot clock is on, it runs out in June, that's when we will get the approval from FEMA. There's no more technical revisions, it's their internal process at this point, and June is their deadline. We have no other revisions to make for FEMA, nothing pending.
Okay, I guess it's on to Mr. Rice.
Trying to figure out how to put this in words that won't insult anybody, and pardon my voice. The question I asked has not been answered. When I heard aggregate and mine in sewer authority, the back of, the hairs on the back of my neck went up. We used to have Sewer District Number One, and they wanted to build an aggregate mine on their property, and the county went ballistic. And the sewer, the sewer district number one ceased to exist, and a whole new governance as the Douglas County Lake Tahoe Sewer Authority was born, and everything changed, and which I'm not sure was a bad idea. However, the aggregate issue, I would hate to see it raise its head again, because I, for one, don't want to have to put up with it. And you know exactly what I'm talking about because heads roll, and my head's only here for another year and a couple of months, so it'll roll up its own accord. But I am not a fan of eminent domain, even though I know it's not a taking, it's a buying. I've received a communication from former Senator James Settlemeyer saying, how can I help this? I would be more than happy to help facilitate a agreement between the county and Park, David Park. I don't know if that's going to be necessary from what I've heard today, but I would hope that the county and Mr. Park can come to some agreement because, as I said earlier, Mueller Parkway, at least that section, will be built, and I would prefer that it be built to the highest standard possible. So that leaves me in a quandary. Do I vote for eminent domain and hope that a resolution can be reached and that it'll all go away? Or do I vote for public domain or eminent domain and hope that if it's not reached, we're going to go ahead, be able to go ahead and do what we need to do? That's my quandary. I've received several comments about, please don't do eminent domain, and I've heard other comments saying, do it, do it, do it. And that's why I asked the question, what would it take to make you happy? What would it take to get you on board and work with the county? I don't know. So that's my quandary, and that's where I sit at the moment, and Mr. Acting Chairman, it's yours.
Thank you. I've watched this issue as a resident and as a commissioner for the last six, seven years, from 2019, and watched as the board came to that park development agreement, understanding that the clock started ticking on January 1st of 2020, and it's rapidly approaching. I know that this project has been on the books and considered for well over 40 years, and it's been identified as a needed road within our county. I see Mueller, and I think it's been pretty much identified as the easternmost boundary of high-density development. And I know that right now, with Virginia Ranch, which is on a portion of Mueller, that we have approximately 4,000 homes that are planned in that corridor, and we're going to need the ability to move our residents through that corridor without further impacting negatively the use of 395 and becoming a complete bottleneck. And I believe that's, you know, the majority of the residents that have moved to Douglas County probably over the last 20 years came out of our neighbor to the west, and one of the primary reasons they moved is to get out of that traffic jam. I know I did. That was one of the considerations. I identified that the building of this above grade was critical, especially in this area, to not only cause the water to go around the residential neighborhoods that we have planned in that area. I heard, you know, commissioners have said that the land taken, or basically the land that's, the 205-feet of easement that's in the park development agreement, and when I see that, I recognize that the commissioners had the forethought in 2019 of at least saying what? of at least saying, well, if we're going to build a road, we should also have bike paths. We should also have multimodal paths. We should have a nice medium down the middle of the four lanes eventually, and all the other accoutrements that go with it, including possible drainage easements. But they did not strap this board to making sure that those amenities were in that development agreement in this timeframe of six years. And so while it would be certainly nice to be able to build four lanes and have the water conveyance and have all the other accoutrements, I don't know that we're in a position to be able to do that, nor do I know that that's necessary at this time, understanding that we, the 4,000 homes that we have planned in that corridor will take 20 to 30 years to build out, okay? And so, and I understand the road is not going to be built, or is going to be built to county standards, however, it's not going to have gutters initially, simply because it's not going to follow a single path, okay? It's going to potentially kind of, so we're going to build the two interior lanes, to my knowledge, mostly. And so trying to build curbs and gutters with only two lanes initially will not have any beneficial impact, and it would cost us money, and we would have to strip that out when we built the other two lanes at some point in time, adding additional expenses. So I don't want the residents to think that we're going to build this road to substandards to accommodate the traffic that we anticipate in there. I listened to Mrs. Scott talk, and she repeated this twice, I wrote it down, deeded for free. She used that term, deeded for free. I can assure you, it is not deeded for free, okay? The existing acreage of about 1,000 acres was previously zoned Ag 19, which allows one home on 19 acres, and the board agreed to provide Park Ranch Holdings the ability to build up to 2,500 homes. So you take a piece of 1,000 acres of residential, of ag land, and you convert it to residential property, that creates a tremendous amount of income for the landowner, and so I dispute the idea that it was given for free, okay? So, yes, we did ask for the 2,000, or 205 feet, but that was for the amenities. That will come later, and I know that we'll get there eventually. Will we have a road to nowhere? I don't believe so. Virginia Ranch on the southern end, behind Stotick Estates, has indicated their desires to build out all four lanes of their requirement in their development agreement in advance of them actually breaking ground on their first home in there. I know that we have worked out and are working still with Mr. Pegram and PPEG LLC in regards to the intersection at Hayborn that requires him to build out four lanes in advance of completing the phase of Montero that's there. This substantially, by building a grub grade, substantially takes a tremendous amount of Phase One, Community One, or whatever you want to call it, of the Park Ranch Holdings property and the Montero property out of the floodplain and diverts water, yes, onto ag land to the north end. And for that, we've offered, for that inverse impact of $20,000, and for the other minor pieces, less than, less than a full acre, 0.7 acres, I believe, a fair market value of 166. So I think we've acted in fair, fairly in that regard. And so I am, I am not a fan of eminent domain, but I don't see any alternative right now. I did like the line, and I'll identify that, and I appreciate it being pointed out. The timeline says, "If uncured, if uncured," and those are two critical words to me, "if uncured," because we don't have any intentions of not curing this issue if it has to go beyond December 31st. We have every intention of building out four lanes of Mueller, I mean, two lanes of Mueller Parkway in this initial phase, and as we have traffic counts that dictate it well beyond my lifetime on this board and well beyond probably my lifetime on this earth, when we have the capabilities and the ability and the traffic counts demand it, then we'll build the other two lanes, and we'll build the infrastructure for the drainage, and we'll build the multimodal paths, and we'll curb and gutter it as we go along. So that's why I feel like I've, I'm, tend to feel, even though I don't like it, and I really don't like it, I do understand also, and I wanted to remind people of this. I grew up in the Junior Chamber of Commerce organization, and one of the lines of their creed says, "Government should be a laws rather than a man," okay? And government should be a laws rather than a man. So I have to discount all the parties involved and look at it from a, from a standpoint of what is best for our community, and we've long identified this as what's necessary and best for our community. So therefore, I concur with the feeling that we need to at least pursue the possibility of creating and establishing eminent domain on the slivers of land that we need to complete this. So that's where I stand. Thank you.
Vice Chairman Gardner.
If there's no other comments, then Commissioner Hales, do you have additional comments, or do you want to offer a motion, or where are you?
I want to offer a motion. I move that we direct staff to commence eminent domain proceedings to acquire land currently owned by Park Ranch Holdings so that Douglas County may continue with construction of Mueller Parkway while continuing to pursue an agreement acceptable to all parties instead of eminent domain.
Do I hear a second? If I don't hear a second, I will second the motion. Okay, so we'll go to a vote. Is there any discussion, further discussion on the motion?
Chair.
If I may.
Richard.
Doug Ritchie with the Douglas County District Attorney's Office. Just to clarify, does the board, does the maker of the motion have any desire to adopt Resolution 2025-R-043?
Commissioner Hales, you're muted.
Yes, I do, you know, my, the recommended motion I'm looking at doesn't have that, but I would amend the motion to include the approval of that resolution.
Okay, we will therefore go to a vote, okay? If I hear no other...
Could you restate the motion?
Okay, so...
You, I'll restate it.
Okay, so you, can you see the screen right now, Commissioner Hales?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so there's, okay, you want to restate that then?
I move that we direct staff to commence eminent domain proceedings to acquire land currently owned by Park Ranch Holdings so that Douglas County may continue with construction of Mueller Parkway and that we adopt Resolution 2025-R-043 as presented, while we also continue to pursue an agreement acceptable to all parties instead of eminent domain.
Okay, and I've seconded that, okay? Do we have further discussion on the motion? Since you know further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, and those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so we have three ayes. Commissioner Tolbert, Commissioner Hales, and myself have voted aye, and Commissioner Tarkanian and Commissioner Rice have voted nay. So the motion passes three to two. Thank you. Thank you very much, and I hope we can proceed and get something done. With that, we've had our break, so I don't know that we need to go back into another break, but we're in item number 11.1 for possible action, discussion and direction to staff regarding legislative or legislative issues proposed by legislators or other entities permitted to submit bill draft requests that may impact Douglas County. The board may take action to support or oppose any legislative item, including in the Douglas County Bill Tracker report included with the board packet. This being presented once again by Ms. Jennifer Davidson, our county manager.
My apologies, I'm going to have to slip out.
Thank you for attending today. We really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the commission, Jennifer Davidson, county manager, for the record. I don't know about you, but I'm emotionally fried. It has been one heck of an afternoon. I can't even put together coherent thoughts, and I apologize because that's not like me.
Would you like me to take this one?
Yes, please.
Okay, okay. Here we are, folks. So anyways, we don't have any specific bills, as I understand it, to discuss today. The, just to give the public an update, and just to give the board commissioners an update, April 11th was a critical date of the state legislature in that any and all bills that are not exempt or have fiscal issues had to be voted out of committee. And so there are quite a few bills that were voted out of committee, and there are many bills, quite frankly, that did not even get a hearing, or certainly didn't get voted out of committee. We will have a better understanding of that from our legislative lobbyists and on a later date. The next critical date for that will be April 22nd, and April 22nd is the last day that a bill must pass out of the originating portion of the legislature. So whether it be a Senate bill or an Assembly bill, must be voted out of that body and be sent to the other body, the non-originating body, on April 22nd, or basically April 23rd is when they'll be sent over. So that's kind of, those are the critical dates that we're kind of gauging and watching for right now, and as we, I think we'll have a much more robust report available to us on May 1st. So we'll know kind of pretty much where we are. The one bill, I will indicate that, it's my understanding that the bill that we opposed, SB 324, which is regarding the sale of single-use water bottles, did get voted out of committee with some adjustments, with some amendments. I haven't had a time, I haven't, I asked the NACO Legislative Governmental Affairs Manager to forward that to me. I haven't had a time. I got it this morning, so I haven't had time to digest that with everything else that's been going on, but it has been amended, and we'll see where that goes. But hopefully, we can still have time to take care of that one. So if there's other questions I might be able to answer, I will be glad to do so. Otherwise, keep your, we'll wait until we see what happens on May, April 22nd, and come forward with a report on May 1st. How does that handle it? Okay, good. Very good. Thank you. So with that, there's no action required. It's just, oh, but I do have to ask for public comment, because it is listed for possible action. So is there any public comment on what I just said? Since you know public comment, we'll bring it back to the board, and we'll move on, because there's no action that's required by this board at this time. Item 11.2 for presentation-only announcements, reports, updates from county commission members, including updates on the various boards and/or commissions that they may be a member of, or a liaison to, or any other meetings, functions they have attended, and any request by a commissioner for discussion of a future agenda item. Ms. Hales has left us, so Mr. Tolbert, anything to report?
We had the Parks and Rec Advisory Board last night, a lot of discussion and entering into the work with Wood Rogers and Frame Architecture, and they're doing, working on the master plan potential for the fairgrounds and what could be done and what we should be looking into, possibly a lot of potential out there with a lot of low-hanging fruit to get to that as part of expanding parking, that kind of thing, without a huge amount of expense. But part of that's also going to depend on the lands bill, if we get the BLM land adjacent to it, or if we have to lease that. So, but it is in the works, lots of potential with that particular facility.
Thank you. Commissioner Tarkanian, Commissioner Rice?
Okay, I attended the Tahoe Douglas Visitors Authority meeting, as well as a Lake Tahoe Visitors Authority meeting, and happy to say that the night monsters who play in the event center up there have made the playoffs, and they are now on their way to hopefully getting a trophy. Also, I attended the Sewer Authority meeting on Wednesday, and the maintenance programs are underway, and I'm proud to announce that not one drop has got into the lake ever from us. Thank you very much.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. So on a weekly basis, I continue to participate with our NACO board in regards to the legislative committee, so studying those bills that might have negative impact. We're always playing defense here, trying to keep the state legislator out of our business, but anyways, so that's troublesome, obviously, and hopefully, we won't have a whole lot of negative impact. Certainly unfunded mandates, I know that our other elected officials are following things that are going very, very carefully up in Carson City as well. I did want to, two things. Number one, today, this afternoon, is the outdoor recreation and business thing at the community center. So if you have an opportunity to visit the community center, please feel free to go through that and look at those. I always enjoy walking through that, so I wanted to give a shout out to them. We do have our Visitors Authority meeting tomorrow morning, bright and early at 8:00. So a little earlier than I necessarily like after a board meeting, but that's the case. Also, I will, you know, indicate that our U.S. Senator, Senator, I hope that's okay for me to announce that? Okay, our U.S. Senator, Senator Catherine Cortez Masto will be visiting our county next Thursday. Commissioner Hales and myself will be joining her, along with, I believe, Ms. Rudelbach and Jacques Seshavoyan, and I think the primary purpose of this visit is to visit those areas that will be potentially dedicated to Douglas County, a lot of it for storm water management on the east valley, east side of our county. She is carrying the, on the Senate side, our lands bill, and it includes the 600 acres also out at the, at the, at the fairgrounds for future development. So hopefully, hopefully, we can, I know she's already aware of these areas, but maybe boots on the ground will help her appreciate the need that we have. So other than that, I think that's it that I have. So thank you, commissioners, for your continued participation in your assignments. And then we'll go to closing public comment. So at this time, public comment will be taken on those items that are within the jurisdiction and control of the board of commissioners, or those agenda items where public comment has not already been taken.
Thank you, Chair. Jason Gibson with the American States Assembly. This is in regards to tomorrow's commemoration at our Capitol, supporting Governor Lombardo and elected officials and all public servants to raise awareness of the up-and-coming 250th anniversary of the founding of the United States of America, and to communicate the meaning of Revere's Ride, Paul Revere's Ride, reminding... meaning of Revere's Ride, Paul Revere's Ride, reminding citizens and American state nationals of their part in the perpetual building of a more perfect union. It's going to be very interesting to see how many judges and peace officers and public servants out of Douglas County show for this one. There's a typo in this press release. They're commemorating the founding of the United States, Inc., which is a ghost corporation broke as a joke, folks. And you're seeing the largest bankruptcy in the history of civilization today and every day because the United States is a de facto fiction, and it's absolutely out of business. So what we're going to do tomorrow is we're going to kick off a campaign, a continuing consciousness campaign to draw your attention to the Federation of States and a legitimate, lawful form of governance, self-governance at that. And they're calling this commemoration "Two Lights for Tomorrow." It's a nationwide initiative to restore your proper understanding of a legitimate form of governance, which has been obscured by one perpetual emergency after the next, and was initiated by this memorial they have up here of President Abe Lincoln, who chose to incorporate the Republic of America as a ghost corporation and began a mercenary war called the Civil War, which was never quite settled. So that's what we're dealing with here tomorrow and every day. This is going to be very interesting because they're drawing upon the patriotism of a country that's lost in time. And why they would host this particular commemoration at 3:00 in the afternoon when everybody's ready for a siesta and looking like Commissioner Tolbert over here is beyond me. It's likely is going to be very few people in attendance, but yours truly will be standing. And what we've got here is a nationwide initiative drawing upon the alert that Samuel Adams and John Hancock and Lexington and the colonial militias in nearby towns about the approach of the British troops before the battles of Lexington and Concord. It's the British Tories that have taken over the de facto government doing business as the United States. So don't let this dog and pony show fool you. Joe, we're not buying more lip service. We want a real constitutional republican form of government, and we're not going to settle for anything less. Thank you. See you tomorrow.
Jim Slade, I apologize for keeping you an extra two or three minutes, but I did miss the entire morning session, so I'm not as tired as some of you are. I'm full energy. Although, you know, I just came for the main issue this afternoon, which I did think could have been an hour or two shorter if you kept to the agenda. My wish, my real wish regarding that item was that we could unwind the clock and go back about 20 years before the approval of Mueller Parkway, which is only to facilitate growth, it will not reduce traffic on Highway 395. I mean, whoever thinks that when 10,000 more people live over there on, within a mile or two of 395, that the traffic can be less than it is now is delusional. And I would definitely like to go back before the ill-advised master plan to transfer receiving area from Topaz to Carson Valley, which is against the will of the people, the clear will of the people, and is now causing all kinds of additional problems. But I'm going to guess that's probably not going to happen. You know, when Park was asked how long their presentation would be, he said 15 to 20 minutes. It lasted about an hour. You know, that should have been reined in at some point. You know, you can't just let them drone on and on and on and on and repeat stuff two and three times. This agenda item was whether or not to authorize eminent domain proceedings, merely the first step in that process. And it was meant in large part to spur consensus and compromise. Everyone hopes to avoid eminent domain, but we need that spark to get the parties to sit down and seriously negotiate. Yet much of the lengthy discussion by both Park and certain board members focused on the drainage canal, in an attempt to negotiate a settlement today in this courthouse to come to some sort of a compromise. And a lot of that discussion seemed to me to be outside the scope of the agenda item, and, you know, didn't end up going anywhere. You know, today was about completing two lanes of Mueller Parkway by the end of the year and having the option to use eminent domain as a tool to hasten that process. As you know, the resolution adopted is merely a first step, designed to encourage and hasten that compromise agreement. And the passing of the resolution to make that first step could have and should have been accomplished in an hour or so, not three hours.
Thank you, Mr. Slade. Any additional public comment? Since you know additional public comment, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
[inaudible][1781.33][1781.33][laughter][1782.33]